Good evening and welcome to the work session November tenth, two thousand and twenty at six oh four P M. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute, section thirteen D point oh two one in the current state of emergency due to COVID nineteen pandemic. This work session of the Independent School District two seventy-nine School Board will be conducted via electronic means, consistent with the current state and federal pandemic guidance. Superintendent Corey McIntyre and myself, Board Chair Michael Stoffey, have determined that due to the health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for board member in-person attendance is not practical or prudent for this work session. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically by streaming online via the district website. Up to twelve members of the public may view the video conference on the monitors in the boardroom at the E S C. The outcomes of this evening's work session will be that board members will receive reports and updates on the Oseo area schools learning model, the long-range financial planning budget parameters, long-term facilities maintenance update, and a distance learning academy update. Board members, please respond that you are present on this video conference when I call your name. Director John Bristol.
Here.
Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton.
Here.
Director Tanya Simons.
Here.
Michael Stoffey, I am here. Director Jackie Muscata-Jones.
Here.
Director Heather Douglas.
Here.
And Superintendent Corey McIntyre.
Here.
Superintendent's cabinet and other district administrators are also logged into the video conference. And when I'll ask the Superintendent McIntyre to facilitate the agenda items for this evening's worst work session, and we start it off with the learning model. Superintendent McIntyre.
All right, thank you, Chair Stoffey, and as it turns out over, over the months, you actually helped me facilitate these meetings when we do them virtually. So thank you in advance for that assistance. You did a nice job with the overview. We're going to give everyone an update on our learning models work with a number of new pieces of information coming in today. Also, again, keeping our long-range financial planning in our scope and an update on that work along with our beginning efforts to start tying that more strongly to our strategic plan. A long-term facility maintenance update as well, and then ending with an update on all the work that's happened since this summer on distance learning academy and where we see that, see that model going in the future. So a lot to cover tonight, a lot of information to cover, and I'll just say in advance, thank you for your attention and working through the, the four agenda items this evening. So we're going to start with our I S D two seventy-nine learning models. I have asked Colin O'Brien and Laurel Anderson to assist me a bit tonight with some elements of the presentations. We'll be moving in and out of a couple of different documents and literally the information is changing up to an hour before the meeting tonight. It's just our reality these days and we appreciate your patience. So I am going to get a, get us started here and I just, as I go to present, I did want to continue to thank the board members for your continued support as things continue to change. Again, since the summer when we started the school year, a week later moved into distance learning for two weeks and then our K twelve hybrid model all the way up to just yesterday when we moved to distance learning with our secondary schools with the impact of COVID nineteen. So can someone just give me a verbal that you, those slides are showing? I can't see any, so.
Yes, I can, we can see them.
Thank you. All right. So just to move right into things here, as each time we start with the fact that we, with our decision-making framework, along with all the data we look at, we have really focused on key indicators and we have ten key readiness indicators for each learning model. And the majority of this presentation tonight is really on the last one that's really around state requirements and local citywide and countywide case rate data. So we'll be giving you updates on, on that information many of it received today. And just by way of reminders, we've been in our level three hybrid learning model, a couple of different variations of that. K twelve hybrid and then a distance learning with elementary hybrid here since September twenty eighth. And really watching things to determine when we might need to make another change. So this is in alignment with our, our learning plan levels really is our version of the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan. This decision-making framework that we've looked at every time we've met here the last couple of months has been updated a bit because of the new guidance we got from Minnesota Department of Education here about two weeks ago. And the, the change is in that upper left quadrant. We're now in addition to, to giving consideration and guidance from the state learning model, including the county case rate counts. We also have city level data and then we have been given guidance that we can also take into account or all school districts can take into account the number of confirmed COVID cases in the district, number of quarantines and number of close contacts in our schools and school buildings. So we've added that to our review of key data inputs and our readiness indicators. And then along with that, we take that in consideration with required consultation from the Department of Education and Department of Health, along with consultation with Hennepin County Public Health and other stakeholders. And we use that information to develop our recommendations we've been bringing to you as board members for decisions when it involves a district-wide decision. And then once those are made, lastly, we update stakeholders and the status of our learning models or any changes.
Corey, we're having, uh, we're having difficulty with the feed right now and we might need to reboot. So could we pause for just a couple of minutes here?
Sure. Do you, what would you like all the members on the call to do?
I think we can hold for right now. We can just mute and hold and I'll update you in, in a second here, okay?
Thank you, Jim.
All right. Corey, I think we got the problem fixed here and we can get ready to go. We probably will not have Mike's introduction on. But I think if we just pick up from the beginning of your explanation with respect to the learning model.
All right, thanks, Jim.
Thanks, everyone, for your patience. It's kind of been how it's been lately, right? So I got a, I got a practice run. How's that sound? Can everybody hear me? Okay, I get a thumbs up?
Yeah, we're good.
All right, all right, thank you. So I'm going to present again here and I'm just going to start from the beginning, so bear with me in case that wasn't picked up before. Okay. Well, again, I appreciate your support and tonight we're going to give an update on our learning models. As we've gone through learning model changes since the beginning of the year, whether it was starting the year a week late, distance learning for two weeks and then into our hybrid model from September twenty eighth until yesterday when we moved to secondary schools and distance learning. We're going to give you updated information since our decision last time on October, the board's decision last time on October thirtieth. So tonight I will have Colin O'Brien and Laurel Anderson help with presenting some of the information tonight. As we have done each time, I like to remind ourselves of our key indicators. We have ten key, key readiness indicators for each learning model. And we're really focused tonight on the changing information on our county, city and local data in regards to the safe learning plan that's provided to us by the Hennepin County and other sources. Our learning models, safe learning plan levels really mirrors the Minnesota Safe Learning Plan, and we've been at level three here for a while since September twenty eighth, again, whether it was K twelve hybrid or now the secondary distance elementary hybrid model. And this is our decision-making framework we've been using all along when it comes to making our model decisions. This has been updated to reflect new guidance from M D E recently where we've added district positive case rates, district symptomatic case rates and close contact case rate data, not only district-wide but by buildings. And these metrics go along with our county and city case rate data and, and our key readiness indicators. So we use that information in, in concert with the required consultation with Department of Education and Department of Health, along with consultation with Hennepin County Public Health and our other stakeholders to develop recommendations for our school board when it involves a system-wide model change. And when those changes are made or if they stay the same, we work to communicate and implement and refine those models and communicate that to our stakeholders. So by way of moving forward here with the state model parameters that we began looking at last summer, this past summer, this again has given us our, kind of our parameters for decision-making around learning models. And most recently, we had been in that thirty to forty-nine range with our countywide case rates, which prompted us to move to hybrid learning for elementary and distance learning for secondary students. And now we will, and I also point out here that that threshold for fifty and above is the, is for distance learning for all students. Here's an update regarding the latest county data that we received today, and my apologies for the October fifth date. I thought that got changed. But if you look at the dates across the top of the bar graph there, you can see the most recent window is ten twenty through eleven two. So that is our most recent update and you can see that as of this most report, recent reporting period today, the countywide rate increased nineteen point seven points, putting the county at fifty-seven point six, which I believe has been the largest increase to date and, and at a unprecedented record high across the county. In our local cities that are larger than ten thousand that primarily feed our district, Brooklyn Center saw an increase of thirteen point three points and is now at seventy-eight point five. We saw a twenty-one point increase or actually a little bit more than that. I'm sorry, the increase for Brooklyn Center went from sixty-one to seventy-four. I'm just going to be clear, we went from fifty-six to seventy-eight in Brooklyn Park, sixty-one to seventy-four in Brooklyn Center. And you can see here, we went from forty-eight to six, forty-one to sixty-eight in Maple Grove. So that twenty-six point jump was one of our largest we've seen. Plymouth also went from thirty-five to fifty-one. And these kind of increases were really felt across the county, continuing to underscore the nature of a wide community spread event and not being isolated to, you know, unique reasons for the case rates going up. And again, this has been our largest increase to date. So this clearly moves us, our, all of our cities and the county case rate to moving towards that learning model of distance learning for all students. What I'm going to have, have next is I'm going to stop my presentation and have Colin O'Brien jump on. He's our COVID nineteen team coordinator, walk the team, walk us all through our positive case rate update, symptomatic case rates update and our close contact cases update. And I'll jump back on with my presentation once he's completed that section. So thank you, Colin, for jumping on.
Absolutely. Good evening, board members, Superintendent McIntyre and Cabinet. Give me just a minute here to pull up the presentation. My apologies, we've got a spinning wheel here. Bear with me. All right. All right, is, uh, is that working? Can everybody see what's going on here? All right. So we're going to be looking at November fifth, so Thursday of this previous week through the data today that I've pulled, November tenth at three P M. And I've also got some side data here that includes last week numbers, October twenty-ninth through the fourth and the previous week. So three weeks back now, the twenty-second through the twenty-eighth is we'll, we'll look at sort of what the trends are doing as it is localized to our district. So you'll see the positive case rates here through three P M today. We've had thirty-five students and sixteen staff members to a total of fifty-one since Thursday. And we'll note that last week for the full seven-day period, we had forty-nine confirmed cases. And the week before that, we had thirty-two positive cases total. So we've seen a, an increase and we would still have everything after three P M today and all the way through Wednesday evening at eleven fifty-nine through reporting for the, the full period. We break them down by site. So you'll see here, we had the largest case number at Maple Grove Senior High had thirteen positive cases just since Thursday this past week. Uh, so far, we have not attributed any of these to be transmitted in our sites. Right now, the designations are still considered community spread. As we move down, we'll move through the symptomatic cases again, November fifth through November tenth, fifty-three students, twenty-seven staff to a total of eighty. And for the full last week reporting, we had ninety-nine the previous week and we had one hundred and sixteen for the week of the twenty-second. We would note as well with secondaries moved to distance learning this week, we would have anticipated these numbers to be lower as we're seeing a significantly lower student population in our sites without our secondary students. Uh, we saw no major areas of impact. It was pretty standard throughout the district. There was no one area that seemed to jump off the map here when it comes to symptomatic cases. Move down for the same reporting area, November fifth through the tenth on close contacts. So again, these are any students or staffs in a household with a symptomatic individual, anyone who had been in contact with anyone who was positive. So it could impact quite a few number of people. We have a hundred and ninety-five students and fifty staff to a total of two forty-five. Uh, last week's total, we were at two hundred and ninety-seven and the previous weeks we were at two hundred and one. Again, we, uh, we are seeing an increased number of these. They're taking a little bit longer for us to get through and add to our system. So I would anticipate this number before the finished reporting on Wednesday to go up. I don't know exactly how much, but it is going to increase. So you'll notice here by site, we've had a couple of sites. So Garden City had twenty-three close contacts. That was due to an individual who was onsite while symptomatic, who had close contacts with the twenty-three individuals while in our sites. It's a mixture of students and staff. So that's what is attributing the Garden City spike there. We had a similar smaller case at both Elm Creek and Rush Creek. So similar cases where, you know, that community spread happens or an asymptomatic individual comes into the buildings, not knowing that they're spreading the virus. And then we see symptomatics develop and then we see a, a close contact spike as well. So that's really what we've noticed in these trends here. We'll go through our information to date. So it says year-to-date, but it really means August twentieth through today at three P M. We do have a hundred and fifty-two students and seventy-one staff members confirmed COVID nineteen cases within our buildings. We have a five hundred and sixty-seven students and two hundred and eleven staff members, again, same reporting date since August twentieth. And since August twentieth, we've had one thousand and fifty-six close contacts and two hundred and fifty-four staff members affected by that. And again, those close contacts are any number of, any number of staff that are students who had a household member who was symptomatic, things like that. So as of the reporting period here, we've broken it out as a percentage positive of our total populations that were in the buildings. And again, this is a reporting period through August twentieth of two thousand and twenty. So that's all of the, all of the data we have now. Unless, Corey, you need something else?
Uh, yeah, you can jump off. Colin will field questions at the end, but I did want to just point out a couple of clarifying points. And we've heard from and if someone, thank you, Colin, you might have needed to mute there to hear my echo. As we heard from Jan Malcolm on a call last week with superintendents and board members across the state, you know, the, the, the issue of transmission's been very challenging. Uh, we know about forty percent of our cases in the county have not been able to be traced. Uh, in part to, it's a belief at least of our health experts that asymptomatic cases can be a big part of this and the ability to trace that's very challenging. So when it comes to looking for a way to try to quantify that, it's, it's been very challenging. There hasn't been a way yet to really quantify that, that transmission question because of some of the asymptomatic transmissions we've, you know, been told from our health experts that's happening. So it is, it is possible that positive cases are being spread through asymptomatic students or staff. And we would not know on that unless we were able to determine through contract tracing, contact tracing, which right now hasn't been fruitful that way. And it sounds like from what we've been told, similar in the county. So we, we can say for sure though, that we have seen, you know, cases across our system. As of yesterday, when we were looking at positive cases, and it's changed again today with Colin's updated information. But those positive cases at, at that point were representing seventeen of our sites. Our symptomatic cases were representing twenty of our sites and our close contact cases were representing thirty-one of our sites, which really mirrors the community spread concept that's happening across the county and that it's not isolated to certain schools in our district, but really is showing up across our system. So with that in mind, I'm going to kind of move us on to the next slide and has, ask Laurel Anderson to give us an update on how this has impacted us as far as staffing and what we've been tracking here recently. Thanks, Laurel.
Thank you, Corey. As we entered this week, I was, I was absolutely optimistic that our sub shortage problem was going to decline given that our secondary buildings were in distance learning and we don't need as many subs because when people quarantine, they can actually work remotely. Unfortunately, due to a number of staff needing to quarantine, our substitute shortage has actually increased. So we've been tracking the data for our elementary and early childhood buildings for the last two days. As of today, we had sixty-three teachers and forty-three ESPs absent. For the teachers that need substitutes, we had a fill rate of fifty percent. So half of our teachers that needed a substitute, we were unable to fill and had to fill internally. For our overall fill rate for absence management for all of our substitutes, our fill rate today was fifty-six percent. In a regular year, we're in the eighties. So in a regular year, where our fill rate is eighty to eighty-five percent. We have nineteen early childhood and elementary sites. Today, seven of them had ten percent or more teachers absent and eleven of them had ten percent or more ESPs absent. One of our sites had thirty percent teacher absence rate and a different site had twenty-eight percent ESP absent rate. And that's impactful because the, the more people who are absent from the building, the less staff from which you have to pull to cover classrooms, to cover lunch and recess, to cover the front office. All of the things we need to do in order to support our students, our, ourselves, our staff and our community lessen when we have less staff on site. So the fact that we have had so many staff absent, and it's not just a one day, it's typically for a ten-day period in order to quarantine. It's really causing a lot of stress on the buildings. Um, and I've been looking into the data about what's been going on with absence management. So this summer I presented the fact that we initiated conversations with over six hundred staff in absence management. And we broke it down and out of the three hundred and three, three hundred and thirty teacher subs that are available, only about thirty percent, thirty-two percent have actually subbed this year. So we've only had a hundred and five of those people who are in our system actually subbed. And our substitute absence management specialist reaches out every day. She gets communication back. We're sending out communication and emails to people to find out, are they willing to sub? We're getting information that they're either not willing to sub or have secured full-time employment someplace else. With our ESPs, we have a pool of three hundred and forty-four ESPs in absence management and we've only had ninety-seven that have actually subbed at least one time this year. So our substitute pool is smaller as I, as we predicted. The other thing that we have as a metric is we had thirty-eight new, new substitutes hired over the course of the last three months. And because we had openings, because staff took leaves of absences and for other reasons left, we actually hired those that we, so we hired thirty-eight of subs and then seven of them became full-time teachers. Six of them moved into regular status positions as opposed to casual positions. So we had a pool of substitutes and we used them and we're using them every day, which is phenomenal, but it decreases the number of substitutes we have available. And having conversations with our principals, our elementary principals, our problem solving, they are trying everything they creatively have possible in the arsenal of tools to cover these absences. The conversations with the substitutes, when they're calling and asking them to come and substitute is that the substitutes aren't inclined to do it. They, they simply aren't wanting to come in and substitute. Those that are, are doing a phenomenal job and our principals are doing a great job with what they have to cover the absences. We're at a point right now where we're very concerned that we're spread simply too thin and they will not be able to cover these absences with existing staff and the substitutes that we have available. So we're monitoring it every day. And I'm giving Corey a report on our teacher and ESP absences by building for elementary and early childhood every day. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Laurel. And I just wanted to echo a couple of points that based on, not only on the data Colin presented on positive cases and symptomatic and close contacts, the impact it's having on our staff increasingly, and it's our belief that we're approaching a tipping point And it's our belief that we're approaching a tipping point in a number of the buildings where we would potentially have to make a decision where we just simply cannot operate that school and potentially move into a distance learning model due to the number of illnesses and lack of subs that Laurel covered there. Moving forward here, I just want to also update you on our most recent MDE and MDH Regional Support Team consultation that is required of all districts. And Chair O'Staphy and I and Ron Meyer did that last Thursday, although a lot has changed since Thursday. I'm just sharing some of the key components of that consultation call. You know, from a countywide perspective, there's what they're calling rampant widespread community transmission, which is rising exponentially. And that is what we saw today. Last Thursday, they told us we were rapidly approaching 50 and we crossed that threshold in today's data. And that has been the key threshold for a model change. It's been a significant jump in cases, more than it has been a steady incline lately. And it's not been due to any specific cause or isolated reason. It's really been that community spread explanation for it. So it's predicted that case rate numbers will continue to rise. We've all seen the recent daily numbers. And those will begin to show up in our count per 10,000 that school districts use soon. I know last Thursday, they shared that Pennington County had hit a new record of 700 cases in the county. Not that long ago, we used to see 700 across the whole state. So now we're well past that. And we've seen case rate positivity rates increasing basically on a daily basis and then double digits at this point. And again, I covered the fact that they shared 40% of all cases have not been able to be fully traced back to where the exposure was. School districts are reporting more and more staffing challenges. I'm hearing that. I've had lots of conversations here in the last two days, honestly. As I was just going back through and counting them up, nearly 20 districts that I've been in contact with are, have or are planning a move to full distance learning by Thanksgiving. And it's in part, not just the case rate data in their cities and county, but the staffing challenges that people are experiencing. So we are doing our next consultation call that's scheduled for Thursday afternoon. And as a required step in our process, I'll have that follow-up, you know, guidance and recommendation from that call to share with you on Friday. So I'm going to slide down here just real quick. You've seen this dashboard before. We reviewed this dashboard for full distance learning that we put together at the beginning of the year. By taking those four days and delaying the start of the school year to the 14th of September, and then moving into distance learning for two weeks, those two things have really prepared us to be ready to move quickly to distance learning and probably more quickly than some other districts that would need more time for that transition. So we believe we can move fairly quickly as all of our 10 indicators still are in the green. I know it's hard to see and my apologies for that. But they're, in essence, all 10 are in level three in the green zone, really telling us we are prepared. So with that, Chair O'Staphy, I'm just going to make a couple of last comments and then turn it over to you to help facilitate some questions and comments. But in closing, you know, I feel like a bit of a broken record, but we keep saying it, you know, change has really been the only constant for weeks now. And here we are again, dealing with more change. And I just want to echo again how much I sincerely appreciate the patience and understanding of all of our stakeholders, our students, our families, our staff, our community members as we navigate these challenging times. Right now, the goal, you know, is to ensure we provide our scholars with the best educational experience possible during the school year while doing it as safely as we can. So again, our next regional call is on Thursday. And our next opportunity to shift models would be at the special board meeting on Friday, the 13th at 6:00 PM. And with the information we received today, more than ever, I believe my recommendation will likely be making the last day of in-person learning for elementary next Thursday, the 19th. And then moving to elementary, moving our elementary distance learning on November 23rd, which is Monday, to give families enough notice to make plans accordingly. So with that, if we have any schools that need to move there individually beforehand, we may be in that position as well to see if we can keep them staffed properly between now and that point in time. Again, Chair O'Staphy, thank you. And I'll turn it back to you for questions and comments.
All right, thank you. Let's start with Director Simon's, Tanya.
Yeah, I have a few questions on the numbers. So the numbers that are included for students, that includes students that are in the DLA, correct? So those students are still reporting if they've had a close contact or if there's been a case? I'm just trying to understand the cases versus kind of the population pool? And if that's, if we're looking at all students? Or if it's only those students that are in buildings or in hybrid?
I'll ask Ron Meyer to answer that because he's been talking about that often with his team.
Especially with the percent, because it's a little confusing.
I would say that while we have had some students in particular, because we do have some students in DLA that may be in activity. So they are reporting. There are very few, and I don't have the exact figures in terms of, from the data that was shared tonight and what the breakout with DLA, it is not, there are not very many of them. And we can get you that data out in terms of specific numbers that are in DLA, but it's a very small amount.
Okay, so then when we looked at the percentages of total staff and students, would that have been spread over the entire student and staff body? Or only those not in really?
That is one thing that I saw there at the bottom that Colin showed is that that's over the entire student population. And so that is a little bit, those percentages would actually be a little higher in terms of those students that are actually in person from the .74 that he showed on the screen.
Yeah, that was a little surprisingly low, given the numbers there. And then, so when we're thinking about the concerns we have with being 10% and more of buildings not having staff, I think I heard it say due to illness, but that also includes close contacts. It's not necessarily that they're themselves ill or have a test, but it includes the quarantining for close contacts as well, right?
Correct. We still have to get a substitute for them in person? Yes.
Yeah, okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. Okay, those are the questions I have at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton.
Double up on my mute just because my kids are yelling in the background all the time. Okay, a couple of questions. Thank you so much for all this information. It's coming fast and furious as always. When we talk about kind of what we're looking like in the future in the next couple of months, you know, Superintendent McIntyre, how do these numbers or whatever direction we move impact like our setting three scholars and their ability to remain in person? Do you have any thoughts on that or?
I do. With the new executive order, it's been made very clear to districts, we have to do everything we can to provide those services. And as I've been talking with other districts, I think the challenge will be as long as we can staff it. Because, you know, it takes a lot of support for students with significant needs. And so it'll come down to how long we can staff it effectively, watching our staffing rates. But right now, it's been made clear to us and to all districts to do everything we can to prioritize services in that way.
Thank you. And my next question is around, so when you talk about the numbers, I'm just really curious, and I know you've been meeting with lots of people all the time about the data. But at some point, when you, when there's, at some point, does the gap between like community spread and what's happening within our building as it relates to the school day or even some of our activities? Like at some point, is that information, do you still separate that information? Or just when there's a surge in numbers, does it all kind of become, like you know, you're talking about before asymptomatic and, you know, younger people. And I listened to the press conference today too, and just that that, you're not always able to know necessarily. You don't have the symptoms, but it's still the spread. So is that, is there some times that that is going to start to kind of come together and not be so separate as we look at numbers? If that makes sense?
Yeah, you captured it well. And I think you captured an issue it's been hard to sort out. Even the state has acknowledged it's been very challenging to try to figure out a way to measure that asymptomatic transmission that we believe is out there. So the best, next best set of data we have is everything we kind of shared with tonight. Knowing that as numbers increase, our risk increases if we have more and more people experiencing it and are coming in and out of contact with our school environment. So I don't know if I have a great answer to that. I'm hopeful. It would be nice for all of us to know a little more specifically. We keep working towards getting to that point of having more certainty on that. But it's been really challenging, not only for schools, but counties and probably statewide.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think it would just like help, I know for me as a board member, but then in our community, I mean, there's just a lot of, almost like people even get mad at each other just around just like what are we actually looking at and basing it off of? And I think it's very complex and things are constantly changing. And then, you know, some of the data is lagging, some of it's not. But I just really want to acknowledge that, that, you know, you're looking at really every really angle around the data. And then the last piece, I wanted to just ask your thoughts about, and just we hear this a lot is around the impact of however we move forward on our athletics and activities. And if you've given any thought to that, or if there's direction, more clear direction from the state?
You're hitting the, all the really hard ones. You know, athletics right now, we're still on the path of continuing to move forward with athletics while we can. And we, until we have either an outbreak on a team or, you know, in a building that would impact those things like we covered last time, while we're waiting for any new updated guidance from the high school league or MDE. You know, there's been wonderings about, will there be a statewide shift? Or, you know, as we approach winter sports and so forth? And we've all kind of been pushing on the high school league and on MDE around, is there going to be any statewide decisions? Otherwise, it continues to fall on districts to make decisions around those things. So at this point, our position has been we have continued until we can't, until teams or sports or schools are in a place where we have to close them down.
Thank you.
All right, thank you Director Dawson-Walton. Director Douglas.
Kelsey asked all my questions. No, seriously though, she did ask a lot of the questions that I have had weighing on me and that I'm receiving from community members. There's obviously a huge amount of concern related to activities, especially for our high school seniors who are now in distance learning and fearful that they won't be able to participate in activities. And I do want to say that I think that our coaches and staff involved in those activities have really gone way above and beyond to try and keep those kids protected from transmitting the virus between one another so that we can keep those things going. And I know it's really hard when we can't. But, you know, I think that they're doing the best we can for that. I did have a question. I also watched the governor's press conference this afternoon. And there was a piece of information that really struck me about the cases and the percentage of cases and where they're being spread. And it seems to me that so much of it is not happening in schools and school-like settings. And I have a, I feel very conflicted because obviously the case numbers are increasing significantly and we're seeing a real impact in our sites. But also, if the percentage of cases that are happening are not happening in our school, I am very concerned about the impact that these new cases are going to have on how we operate and our ability to best serve our kids. And I was just wondering if you have any other insight or information about, you know, how can we, knowing that we're keeping track of that information and where the cases are happening and trying to do our own contact tracing within our sites, if there's any way that we can kind of protect the process that we have right now and operate in the best interest of our kids?
You said it well Heather, thank you. You really kind of outlined, you know, we have a COVID-19 response team internally that's a centralized group, which has really proven to be pretty effective for us and really allowed us to get to this point. And I'm going to circle back to with, you know, what I heard Jan Malcolm say last week on Friday with just the really the big challenge of those asymptomatic situations. We've been able to contract, contact trace pretty well with when people know where they might have gotten it. But when you hear 40% of the cases in the county can't be traced back to a source, that's really challenging. So we're all hungering, we all want what you want is a little more clarity on that. So if we know where it's happening, we can make additional actions around it. I also think you said it well with, the reality is we have increased cases symptomatic in close contacts in our staff and our students. And that's really impacting our operations as well as the community spread outside of our schools, right? So it's both things. It's a community spread and it's impacting our ability to deliver a good quality education safely. You know, our principals and our staff have been doing amazing job, literally by the hour, covering different parts of their school day and asking people to do things outside of their normal duties to just make it happen. So we're being very stretched operationally that way. But it's because we have great people that are willing to do it. So you made some great points and we all kind of are striving to have more specificity. Hopefully, we can continue to get it as time moves forward.
Thank you.
Thank you Director Douglas.
Thank you. I've also been hearing several of the questions that have already been asked. I am trying to remember, did at one point, we talk about some of the people at the ESC doing some subbing if available? Is that an option and is that occurring? And then are we, if there's a teacher gone and we pull an EL teacher to do classroom teaching, is that considered a filled position or is that considered? I'm just wondering because when we do these things, when we say, oh, we have the staff to spread around, what's happening is we have students that are not getting the full services that they need. And so that's a piece of the puzzle that I think is extremely important when we're talking about educational equity and, you know, which model is going to serve the best for our children?
Yeah, thank you for asking. I'll let Laurel really answer that better than I can right now. But I will say from an ESC perspective, all of our district level staff are also very stretched trying to make everything happen operationally and instructionally and all these changing models. So, and then there's limitations around licensure, things like that too. I think Laurel probably can speak to better than I can. But you are correct, as we move a lot of people around, it affects the quality of the services and teaching and learning that happens. Laurel, can you add to that?
Yes, absolutely. So Jackie, one of our models was to take staff with a bachelor's degree and have them get a short call sub license. And we did start that process. We had about 50 people initiate that, both at the ESC and at the sites. We actually had a caravan set up to take staff to go get their fingerprints done because that's part of the process. We had it set up for Friday. We had a collaboration with the Brooklyn Park Police Department. We were going to pay for the fee to get their fingerprints done. And we had zero staff show up. So the people who were interested way back in July have really declined. We have had a number of ESPs in the buildings, still moving forward with that plan though. So they have, either they already have their teaching license and they're serving as an ESP and we can pull them into the position. The other thing that we've done is we've looked at some of our TOSSAs, our Teachers on Special Assignment. So APPS coaches, staff development assessment specialists, equity teachers, and utilize them for building positions. There's few and far between. And then to answer your question about if somebody fills it internally, is it considered a filled absence? And the answer is it depends on the site. So what I'm doing is I'm pulling the data at 7:30 every morning before the secretary, the site administrative assistants have been able to fill internally and change it from an unfilled to a filled. So I'm trying to pull it consistently at 7:30 every morning before the data changes because it's been filled internally. So we have a true representation of what is actually unfilled.
I appreciate that, thank you.
My other question is about our level three students as well. Do we have any, anything we can give to families of students that? do we have any, um, anything we can give to families of students that are level three as far as, um, are their services going to essentially stay the same as they are in hybrid? Are they going to, um, have to do some combining or are they going to have to, um, have different busing or what kinds of things, um, should families, um, expect? Um, at both levels, considering that we may have to go, um, for elementary as well.
So I'm going to prompt a Michael Lee hand to jump in as he's overseeing our special department. But while he's getting ready, I will say, you know, we're giving that option as an opt-in. So it will be driven a bit by how many families or students do take advantage of that and for as long as we can provide it. Um, so depending on how many students we're serving and how well we can staff it, a lot of those things get sorted out. But I think there's a framework we're working with and, um, Michael, you can talk more about that.
Yeah, absolutely, Jackie. So what we did today, we actually met with, um, some of our sending three, um, uh, connect and skill educators, um, with their S E B Cs and just kind of laid out the plan. Right now, we plan to continue services starting next Monday. We're going to have a centralized location. Uh, that centralized location will be Osseo Senior High School. We've worked with operations, so we have busing. Well, we've also been very intentional about making sure that we have appropriate separation. So we don't want some of our, uh, most, uh, most deserving scholars to be, um, um, concerned about their, their health and welfare. As we talked and we saw some of the data tonight that we're doing a really good job as far as contract tracing and making sure that there's not spread within our buildings. Obviously, our aim, uh, is to continue that. We're working with Colin and the team to make sure that we have a really well thought out and planned out uh, COVID safety plan as well. So, uh, the, the experience will continue. Their services will be consistent with what they've had during the hybrid model. So if they were two days a week, if their I E P determined they were two days a week in the hybrid model, they'd be two days a week starting next week. If it was four days a week, they'd be four days a week. We obviously have, um, transportation set up. We have, uh, food service. And, uh, they will be able to maintain, uh, their level of, of, of education, uh, pursuant to their I E P.
Can I ask a, a little clarifying question on that? Just about that same topic. Do you mind, Jackie?
Go for it.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify one thing. Um, the, the executive order specifically says, um, intensive. And there's been a lot of question or speculation about what does that exactly mean? How does a family know whether or not their child is receiving intensive services?
Yep, they would, that would be determined through their I E P team process, their I E P team meetings individually. So it's a little hard to say it from a blanket standpoint. And it's also very clear the intention and the priority is on serving, uh, needs of students who really cannot have their needs met in a distance learning framework or model. So that is, you know, drills all the way down to that individualized I E P team process. Um, so even though we're talking about a couple of programs, um, that's more of a general guidance, I would say. And then we're working through those individual decisions. A little bit similar to like we do with extended school year, the summer or, you know, on those breaks during the school year, uh, it's determined in a similar fashion.
So I, um, I have some concerns about the centralized location, um, just because I, um, I've worked with level three kids, um, quite a bit. And what I know is, um, change is really hard for a great majority of them. And so when we're asking our, uh, most, when we're asking our students that, um, are challenged by, um, transitions and changes to once again, after being distance and then hybrid and now being in another building, they might have another bus driver, they might have another, um, food service person. I'm concerned that the behavior issues that may result from, um, overstressed brains and, um, is going to cause um, less, uh, actual academic, um, and social emotional, um, growth.
So Michael. Yeah, I, I, we agree, Jackie. Part of it is, um, being able to staff it. And if we have, um, small, really small classrooms, because not everybody will opt in, we may not have the ability to have enough staff to run it at every site. So, um, those are some of the harder decisions we, I think Michael and his team were wrestling with. And maybe you want to fill in a little bit more specific information there, Michael. But I think, uh, weighing all those factors out, and I know the team wrestled with whether to do it at the local sites or in a centralized way. So, uh, Michael, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, Jackie, those, that, that decision was certainly not taken lightly. Uh, we were very, very intentional about making sure, um, what you will see, and I'd certainly invite you to come out to visit next week if you'd like to, that we really were intentional about creating spaces within the new building. So, um, Northview, for instance, they have a suite that's assigned to them. Uh, some of the other buildings have a suite. And so the staff is coming over. The other piece is, as Corey was just, uh, speaking to, is that our largest caseload is eight scholars. Um, and that's if everybody, uh, were to attend. So, um, we don't know how many of our scholars will attend, and that's certainly going to be a family choice. Uh, but if we have one or two, uh, we want to maintain programming. Uh, it seemed like the appropriate, uh, decision was to have it centralized. And then we also can make sure that we can, um, provide the level of services that we have some of our specialists that they're coming in and they can provide the support, uh, needed at a centralized location. So, uh, certainly understand the concern. Uh, we are not in disagreement. Uh, and it was a challenging decision, but I'm hopeful that, um, by centralizing it, we can have even elevated experience potentially than what they would have had at their, at their, uh, site of origin.
Are we taking, not to belabor this, this particular thing, but are we taking measures to make sure that there's, um, bathroom facilities and changing facilities that are near and close to each, um, group and then that are not cross-using, um, fees and then that, um, teachers have access to the materials that they need to have? I just know that a lot of them, especially at the high school level, have to have access to the fax, um, facilities and, um, things like that. So I'm just a little, um, a little concerned about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So that's the beauty of the high school is the fact that we, we can put, we have a fax room, we have some of the skill rooms, we have a strategies room. So many of the rooms have a sink, they have their own, uh, changing table, the proximity to bathrooms, um, is very, very close. So those concerns are certainly ones that we, um, work through. And there's certainly going to be some learning, right? I'm not suggesting that everything's perfect. Um, but that's the, that's the brilliance of the educators that are going to come, that came together today. And then we have meetings at Osseo both, uh, two, uh, we have, uh, middle school, uh, tomorrow at nine. And then we have high school tomorrow at ten thirty at Osseo Senior High School. So some of those other concerns that, um, may have been a immediate oversight as we transition to this experience, hopefully those will emerge at that time. And we're also giving time to, for our staff to make sure that they can settle into their rooms appropriately as well.
Last cl- clarifying question. So we're talking about all secondary, middle school and high school are all in Osseo Senior High.
That's correct. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for now.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Director Bristol.
Well, I'd just like to thank all of you that are working so hard to, to potentially have to pivot again because it's hard on the entire community. Uh, and you all are on the front line, all of you that are watching tonight, all the teachers, all the parents. Uh, one of the concerns that I have, I guess, um, maybe I missed something in the briefing earlier, but, you know, when we looked at the ready to, to go to distance learning, everything was green. But I seem to recall that one of the challenges of, of having everything in distance learning, uh, was childcare. And I'm just wondering how we're doing on being able to provide that if we have to ramp up to that in a hurry. Uh, because I know a lot of the parents in the community are probably, uh, watching this tonight and probably very concerned about how they're going to have to handle their lives at home. So I'm just wondering if we can have an update on how we're doing there.
Yeah, thank you, Director Bristol. Brian's on the call here, so he's ready to go.
Yeah, thanks, um, John. The, actually, the hybrid model is our most challenging model to deliver childcare. So, um, when we've been in distance learning for all, for example, the first two weeks of school, uh, we had some access to uh, utilizing folks who typically work K twelve during the school day to help cover shifts for childcare. So that's why you see, um, childcare in green when it's distance learning and in yellow when it's hybrid. So, I think, does that answer your question or do you have another question with that?
I think I asked that just to kind of make sure that we get that out there because I'm hoping that parents at home are feeling comfortable that if we have to make this shift, that they've got an opportunity to potentially be able to manage it if they have to. Um, I know also though, that if we're experiencing time where we're missing teachers and having a hard time filling positions, it can't be easy to, to staff that either. So I'm hoping that, uh, we can continue to find the quality of due teachers. Uh, to that end, I had one other question, uh, because I know that, uh, from what I can tell, we've been lucky that it's been safer in the building than it has been outside. You know, a lot of the spread is in the community and not in the buildings. And now we're going to go home. And so I would expect that that's actually a place where there's potentially for more spread. So if teachers get sick enough where they can't teach at home, I'm just wondering how, how are we helping substitutes that are kind of coming in at a forty-five degree angle to be able to get into the learning modality online and interact with these kids that, you know, what kind of things are we doing to get them ready so they can help us? Just, I'm just curious.
So, uh, Laurel, would you like to, um, respond to that first?
Yeah, I don't have a really good answer, uh, Director Bristol. So, um, what I can tell you is that we've provided some of the P D, um, professional development that we were offering in August to some of our substitutes, particularly when they fill a long-term position. So when we're in a distance learning model, we are not getting substitutes for a one-day absence. The teachers are expected to post asynchronous learning. But if it's two days or more, then we get a substitute and they are able to access the synergy pages or Schoology pages for other students. Um, and then our principals are reaching out as well as our team leads, reaching out to support those substitutes. In addition, we can provide the professional development to them. Our continuous substitutes are who we utilize first because we already have them hired, um, already paying them their salary. So they are trained, they go to the professional development. So whenever possible, we, um, use our continuous subs first. They know the, they know the processes. So they're the most intimately, um, aware of how we do our distance learning programs. But yes, we can continue to look at different opportunities for the professional development that we offered virtually this fall for our substitutes.
Great. Well, I mean, the bottom line is I, I just want to say to all those elementary parents out there that might have, uh, concerns, you know, we, we don't want to see this happen. But we want to be ready. We want to help you every step of the way. And I know that the team here is really, really focused on trying to deliver the best they can to your children in a really difficult time. And we're all, we're all thinking about you guys. And we all want you to know that, uh, they're going to do their best. So all those notes and things that you're sending us, we are listening. We hear you and, uh, we're with you. All right? So those are my comments. I wish you all well. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Bristol. Um, uh, question, you said we had a hundred and six absentee employees today. Was that teachers or was that a, uh, teachers and, uh, E S Ps?
We had teachers and E S Ps combined. So we had sixty-three teachers and fifty, forty-three E S Ps.
Okay, that was a hundred and six. And that's just from elementary programs at this point because that's all who was in class, uh, at, at this point.
And early childhood, yes.
Okay. What percentage, uh, i- is that of the total current elementary and early childhood staffing?
I'd have to do the math on that and get back to you on that.
Okay.
We have a lot of, we have a lot of E S Ps who serve in multiple sites. So it's not as clean cut as, um, one might hope, but.
Okay. And out of those hundred and six, are they all out for quarantine or what percentage is due to quarantine?
We have a number of different reasons. Some are sick leave child, some are sick leave personal, some are COVID sick leave. We actually have, um, a couple that are other reasons. And so of the, of the total absences, um, in the E S Ps, we had, I think, just four that were not sick leave. I didn't separate it by quarantine versus sick. And of the teachers that we had out absent, we had five that were something, uh, uh, absent some other reason other than sick leave.
Okay, but we don't know how much of that was COVID versus something else or, okay. Um, when we, we talk about, uh, uh, the spread and Director Bristol had made that comment, I mean, we are still about twenty points below spread today, which is suppose, our numbers are two weeks fresher than what we're getting from the county. Uh, our numbers are still, uh, lower, uh, spread of our population than the community spread population. And, uh, again, I think Director Bristol made it, you know, made a comment that it, it would seem to be safer in the buildings where we scrub them down every day, every night between classes. Everyone's wearing masks, maybe not all the time, but they're certainly wearing masks. We are doing our best to keep social distance. That same thing isn't happening in the community. So, uh, we, we are having a safer environment. It's proved in the numbers. Uh, and, and that's, uh, that's my comment on that. Um, with that, uh, I don't have any additional questions. Uh, does anyone else have a, a follow-up question or we can move on to the next item?
I, I do real quick, um, Chair Staffy.
Okay.
Um, so I do, I, I've asked this before and I'm just wanting to know, what are we doing as a district? Um, now that we've moved into secondary D L, um, around our ho- hi- oh, excuse me, homeless and highly mobile students, um, in terms of, you know, ensuring that they're receiving their hotspots, meals, um, any additional like information? And, you know, what supports are in place, um, for our homo- homeless and highly mobile students across the district?
Sure. So our social workers and counselors are reaching out to our scholars who, um, are in that, uh, category. We want to make sure that they have the, the access. Yeah. This is the opportunity of, we learn anything from the spring that we need to be intentional around some of these particular items. So we've done a really good job, um, tracking them. Uh, our coordinator is making contact. And as needs emerge, we're being responsive to the extent that we can.
Um, in terms of transportation though, for meals, if, if, um, our students maybe for whatever reason out of their control don't live within our boundaries, are we able to provide, you know, the, the some food service or, um, any other materials that students may need or how do they access those? And then I guess my follow-up would be whatever the response is, I mean, is there something that we can do or, or, you know, we, we've talked before about different solutions, being creative around, um, you know, um, lessons learned even from last spring. Um, but, you know, I, I would just would be really open to just, um, being as supportive as possible. And then, you know, even in a future time, maybe hearing from some of the coordinators just to see what, what is going on to have a real pulse on, um, on our homeless and highly mobile populations.
Absolutely. I can reach out to, uh, Chrissy Zimba, uh, who's my coordinator, and she is working diligently, uh, on that. So I can certainly provide an update regarding, uh, through the action that's taking place. Yep.
Thank you.
From a food service perspective with that, uh, homeless population and hi- and highly mobile, I know that Chrissy has reached out to me, uh, personally on, uh, a couple of occasions, uh, to arrange meal delivery and or pickup. So we do deliver, uh, meals to people that are outside of the district, uh, within, uh, within reason. Otherwise, we direct them to other resources that would be available more closer to their home or where they are at ultimately.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, I have, or Chair Staffy, sorry. I have, um, I've received a couple of questions while we've been meeting here about the, um, case models of what's happening in our district that were showed earlier on in the presentation. And there is just some questions, um, around clarifying each of those different donut holes, basically, um, the positive cases versus, um, symptomatic cases and close contact cases. The questions seem to be about, um, the students who are, students and staff who are symptomatic. If they test, um, when do they come out of that symptomatic? Like, is it after a negative test or is it after no symptom? Like, is it after a negative test or is it after no symptom? And same thing with the positive cases, do they come out of that if they later test negative? Um, and if you could just, I guess, clarify how that works, how that's being tracked.
Ron, would you like to try this or is Colin still on the call? I'm trying to find him.
Uh, unfortunately, I think uh Colin had to jump off because he had another um uh commitment this evening. Um, and so I, I, I hate to lead us uh wrong on this, but my understanding is for uh symptomatic cases, um, they, I believe that they can test out of that. If they are a close contact, however, they can't test out of it necessarily because they still have to be the same fourteen days because those um, that transmission and those symptoms could uh come later on, or they could still be carrying it even if they're not sympti- symptomatic. So um I believe if they're symptomatic, they can test out of it. Um, and, and if they're close contact, they cannot test out of it. They have to run the full fourteen days.
So I guess what I'm wondering is if, how, are we keeping track of um, you just made me think of people who are a close contact and are tested negative. Are, do we have a separate category of that? Or obviously they're still close contact and they're still following the guidelines. But if they never do become symptomatic or develop a positive test, are we keeping track of that or does it not impact how we're operating?
Yeah, at tha- at that point, um, you know, if they're close contact, um, obviously if they do end up uh getting symptomatic or a positive case, then we would um deal with that the same way we would with any positive case. Um, otherwise, they have to, you know, go their fourteen days. We have a flag and synergy so that we can track those for the fourteen days that they are in quarantine. Um, so that we know when they can come back into our facilities. But obviously, in the meantime, if they get symptomatic, then we would um, we would address that as a symptomatic case. Or if they pass, test positive, then we would address that with the amount of time that they have to be um, you know, asymptomatic after a positive test in order to be able to come back into our facilities.
I have one last question, and that is if somebody tests positive, they quarantine, it runs its course, they get better and later are exposed by a close contact, are they still required to quarantine? For the duration? Okay, thank you.
Alright, so I have a follow-up question here. Uh, based upon the numbers, we now have half the students in the buildings. Uh, the update on Thursday will reflect uh the proper numbers of students and run the proper number of percentages. Same thing with teachers since we've now lost half the teacher cadre due to the high schools and the secondary shutting down. I just want to make sure that we update the presentation properly to reflect half of the, you know, currently half of the uh what we had in the way of students and teachers compared to last week.
Yeah, in terms of the number, w- we can certainly, uh Chair Staffie, we can run those different scenarios. We are continuing to encourage our students and our staff to report positive cases, uh, because we want to continue to understand um as we move forward and again, going in and out of different models, where are we at with those positive cases? So obviously the close contacts and the symptomatics will be different because they'll all be, they'll be in distance learning, uh in particular our secondary right now. But we do want to continue to monitor and to track any of those positive cases. Um, so as we look at those percentages in terms of percentage of positive cases, et cetera, we will change it to reflect the number of students and staff that are actually in our buildings. But we will continue to track those that are in distance learning as well.
Okay, thanks, Ron. And do, do we know any reason why uh Hennepin County broke protocol and released numbers today instead of Thursday?
I was told it's because of their high level of concern on the rapid increase of the data.
Okay. Uh, and yeah, and the governor made his announcement, I'm sure that was backing that up also. Uh, i- is there uh did, has MBE given us any indication of what those numbers, I'm assuming higher, but have they given us any indication of what those numbers will be two days from now on Thursday?
We won't get an update Thursday. It's every Tuesday now. Uh, I might have covered that earlier, but I'm sorry if I did not. So I, I confirmed that today that the Hennepin County numbers will come out every Tuesday from now on. Um, the guidance we've been getting is c- continue to expect exponential growth.
So it's gonna be every Tuesday, but our, our calls with MBE and MDH to help with the decision will still be on Thursdays?
Don't know that yet until we have a call on Thursday. We won't be able to talk to them about that till then. So they are inundated right now. I tried to move it up and they were not able to accommodate that.
Okay, alright, thank you. Uh, Director Simons, you have a question?
Yeah, so I wanted to follow up on what um Director Douglas was asking for clarification. So um, the year-to-date close contact numbers, those, would those have removed people who tested um negative or, or not? And just trying to understand that data set. Or we're not, or maybe we'll have to follow up on that.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like that's gonna have to be dug into.
The, the close, are, are you talking about the percentage to the total number of students and staff?
So uh, so either, so that we've got the, the different numbers. Um, so close contacts for this week as well as close, would be really be more the year-to-date. So if, if they came into that number that we're tracking year-to-date, but then tested negative, would they have been removed from that data set or would they still be counted as a close contact?
They would still be ca- so the, that data, um, the year-to-date data for close contacts is anyone who we put into quarantine because of a close contact. So they would have stayed in there even if they ended up testing positive or negative. They would still be represented in there because we put them into quar- quarantine because of a close contact.
Okay, understood. So um, so now as we think about the change in the dates, and I didn't catch that fully either at the start, that is now gonna be ongoing Tuesday. So we'll have to re-update, are we gonna re-update all of our internal measures to be on that cadence? Okay. Okay, understood. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Director Simons. And with that, uh Superintendent McIntyre, let's uh wrap this up and move on to the budget parameters. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, yep. Thank you. And just the last comment, you know, clearly we're seeing this impact us operationally and we're watching this rapid growth happening and I expect it to continue. So um I just, I'm, I'm believing right now, we'll see as the week progresses, that it's gonna put us in a likely position for me to recommend that move to full distance by the end of the week and uh unfortunately, right? So we all want back in school in person. That's all we're striving for. And we're hopeful that it comes sooner than later, but uh at this point, um many of the indicators are, are pointing us in the other direction, at least for the time being. I know other districts also have um, have put out there that they're making that change into uh, uh, an aspect or a month into the winter. I, I think it's best for us to continue to monitor things. As we've learned, it changes quickly. And it's really hard to know what's coming in the future. So it's, it's challenging to try to put an end date on something when we don't know exactly how it's gonna change. And that's been our approach so far. So with that, Mike, thank you. And um if we're ready to move on in the agenda, we can transition to our um long-range uh financial planning topic. And I'm gonna introduce this with a couple documents with Ron's help to set up Ron and his team to walk you through the long-range financial planning. And as I shared with the board members over the last few weeks, we've, I've been uh recommending that we continue to try to adjust the order in which the school district sets priorities for the upcoming year and and how we develop the associated budget for that fiscal year. So my strong preference is, you know, we set our district priorities for the upcoming school year first, and then we develop our, our budget to support those priorities. And um, we've already begun to try to do that, even though we're in the middle of just a ton of change right now. So we've um in the past, you know, we've been in a process where we develop uh the budget first, then set priorities later in the year in the spring, which makes providing any opportunities for strategic investments a challenge and more difficult. And um with your support lately, the team's been trying to move forward with using those uh draft operational plan documents that we've been um chipping away at and not nearly as fast as we'd like because of COVID and all the other challenges our system is feeling. And um, we have been kind of moving that forward slowly. So our goal tonight is to try to provide a little bit of guidance for that process through uh some steps that move us closer to that um process being locked in. And I think it might take us a year or two or beyond to really continue to dial that in. And um, we really are trying to set some parameters or general guidelines for our budget managers and others throughout our system as we move into this budgeting cycle. So as, as Superintendent, I'm continuing to try to change that practice and setting those strategies while we're managing so much other change and, and um making an effort to try to do that this year. You know, we're on, with some of our priorities, we're on track, others we've had to pause and hold. And um it keeps changing and we keep adjusting. And so some things that might be implementation level may have to stay there or we are able to move things forward too. So it's a little bit more fluid than we all would like, but that's just the reality of the space we're in. So with this document here, Ron, we, we tried to scale this down for the purpose of this budgeting conversation. Let's just try to um give some feedback to the board around our um twenty-one, twenty-two set of items that are in draft form, are not set in stone, definitely flexible, but trying to provide some direction and guidance. And this first page are the six strategic directions that are still draft. We have work to do as a board in a cabinet to lock these in over the coming weeks and months. But this is the draft where things sit right now, and I, I know the board members are familiar with those. Uh, the next page really is just taking that um twenty-one, twenty-two year and trying to really um begin to identify some priorities that we want to keep on the forefront if we have opportunities to, you know, make budgeting priorities around those. So I, I'm gonna stress again, the items in the learning work, which means we're kind of studying and researching and testing those items in the implementation work where we're trying to put in place and standard work that becomes part of what we normally do. Those are very fluid at this point. So things may ha- may have moved across or stay put longer than we've anticipated, but we're aspiring to move, to work forward in this way. So for example, I really want to, for this conversation tonight and um really not get in, into a ton of detail or the granular granular level, because Kelly Benus is gonna do that for you around the budget side. Um, for tonight's purposes, we've tried to outline some of the higher-level implementation work initiatives for next school year. So we're out in front of it, knowing that a lot can happen between now and then, and it is flexible. But things, for example, are a, a new equity and achievement plan, our online learning work, our DL four A phase four. You know, we're gonna be implementing secondary math next year, and we've uh also gotten um presentations on ELA, social studies and science, along with social emotional learning that's identified here with um MTSS or multi-tier systems of support. By next year, we'll be in year two of our Building a Better Future Plan. And we'll also be moving work forward, you know, through our policy review process. Um, hopefully in year two or maybe year one still of online enrollment. And also um a print study uh around just uh some internal things around our printing practices. Uh, those are some of the higher-level items that have surfaced as we've tried to prioritize a uh, uh, more manageable list, knowing that there's a long list of things that we are still implementing and working on. But those were some of the higher-level items that we're trying to provide to Ron and his team. So Ron, if you can go to the next document, um, we've all looked at the strategic growth and change. We basically covered standard and and, and learning implementation and standard work. So we've covered that visual here tonight. Go to, this is a guiding change document. Really, and the goal of this is a process to look at what's our current context and reality? What is the results we're aspiring to? And what are some unacceptable means um that won't get us there? And, and I'll just quickly go through this. So some of our current contexts and reality that you're gonna learn a lot more about from Ron and Kelly is, you know, we, we've experienced an enrollment decline that has a financial impact. Uh, we, uh because of the challenges posed by the pandemic, um, that slowed down our uh strategic plan to a degree and uh our board agenda. So we're still working through those things. We continue to operate with a zero-based budget. Uh, that's a reality that we're continuing to hang on to. That would, that requires any increase in the budget to be offset uh with another reduction, especially as we're looking at our forecast. The budget was built, you know, up leading up to this point. This year, the budget will be guided by, again, some of those strategic directions and work priorities developed during the course of the year that again are flexible and, and really meant to be guidance. And then our fund balance that was projected to be twenty-eight percent by the end of twenty-one is expected to be spent down over the next four years. With the assumption that revenue will be flat coming from the state because of the economic outlook based on the impact of COVID nineteen. So the board's fund balance policy requires a minimum of five percent at the each, and each fiscal year. And so we need to work towards ensuring that. So our, our targets, our results, we're hoping for is a budget that builds, is built to support the district priorities, a budget that reflects the decrease in enrollment and revenue and acknowledges the anticipated future budget cuts. Maintain that fund balance of five percent. Transparency is an expected result, you know, expected result in our budget process along with uh consultation with stakeholders and developing recommendations. And then lastly, um implementing a strong financial plan like we've had, and you'll see again in our audit coming up um later this month. Um, and in, in absorbing any of those anticipated reduced state funding issues or budget reductions to minimize the impacts of those. Uh, while we look at continuing to uncover and address any system inequalities we have. So some of the unacceptable means would be, we're not gonna violate any state laws or contracts or agreements to get there. We're not gonna continue to fund initiatives or practices that no longer align to our priorities or haven't been successful. And we will um not invest, you know, in anything that might be misaligned or um really keeping in mind short-term needs versus long-term um um priorities that we're trying to hit. And, and again, then uh addressing a, or building a budget that um won't be developed that won't exacerbate our system inequality. So that's a quick overview of just some kind of driving parameters as we try to uh hit that focus question of how we'll adjust our budget process in order to maintain a balanced budget in supporting the priorities. So as Ron and Kelly go through this, at the end, Ron will have a couple of follow-up questions around um what I covered here to help direct us and guide us moving forward. So with that, Ron, I'll turn it over to you and your team. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh Superintendent McIntyre, and good evening, Chair Staffie, school board members and cabinet members. The, the presentation this evening really represents the school board's first interaction with our long-range financial planning, or what we regularly refer to as our LRFP process for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget cycle. Before we dive into some of those details that Superintendent McIntyre just uh referenced for this year's process, I wanna just set the table for the information that will be presented this evening. So just as a reminder to our board members and also to our community, the LRFP process is a well-established and thorough budgeting process. It involves ma- multiple stakeholders. It has regular touchpoints with our school board. And it's designed to ensure that the limited resources that we have, uh even more so, uh more limited because of the situation with responding to and the impact of COVID nineteen. Um, we want to make sure that those resources are allocated in the best way possible to support our mission and also those strategic directions and priorities that uh Superintendent McIntyre just talked about. So if you turn to page nine in your board packet, you'll see uh the document that's up on your screen right now. Uh, this is the model that illustrates our LRFP process. And so I just want to ground us and highlight a few of the items on this uh document, uh because it really highlights the work of our LRFP uh team and our process that we go through. So I'll focus you uh first at the center, uh in the dark blue circle. Uh, this is our mission, again, to inspire and prepare all of our learners with the confidence, courage, and competence to achieve their dreams, to contribute to community, and to engage in a lifetime of learning. This really highlights our effort to ensure that our allocation of those resources is focused on the students that we serve. Then if we look at the gray ovals around uh the mission, this represents the work of our budget managers. Um, Superintendent McIntyre talked about the fact that we need to give them guidance as our budget managers. They really drive a lot of the work of our LRFP process. Um, currently, our work with these budget managers is in oval number four. Um, as budget managers are working on their budget adjustment recommendations right now. To give them a jumpstart on their work before this work session uh this evening, we've preliminarily uh given them direction based on elements that Superintendent McIntyre uh just shared, and that's contained in that guiding change document that he just uh reviewed. Uh, to ensure a couple of things, a zero-based budgeting approach. Um, or more specifically, again, um to ensure that any increase in that budget capacity request that they may bring up to support our strategic directions or those work initiatives specifically for fiscal year twenty-two, they must have a decrease in another area to ensure that we don't have any increase in our overall budget. They must have a decrease in another area to ensure that we don't have any increase in our overall budget. The one exception to this would be additional budget capacity for projected enrollment growth. This is a practice that we started a few years ago and it's specific to address. Any class size outliers that may occur next fall based on our anticipated enrollment growth. These additional resources would only be utilized and deployed if the expected enrollment growth actually occurs. So if you remember this year, we have that set aside for our enrollment growth that we had projected. And because it didn't materialize, we did not deploy those resources. And you'll see that in the financial forecast model that Kelly Benusa will show a little bit later in the presentation. So to dig into that enrollment piece just a little bit more. We, as part of putting together that financial projection, we included some assumptions. Related to finances as well as enrollment. So as board members are aware and recall, our school district, really as well as many other school districts across the state. Have experienced a decrease in our overall enrollment from what was actually projected as we went into this budget year. Specifically because of the impact of the global pandemic. So as we work to create our financial projection that Kelly will go over. In an effort to continue our conservative approach that we have typically went through as we budget and as we financial, put together our financial forecast. We're not assuming that we will recapture all of the students that we lost this year automatically next year. Instead, we are assuming that we'll gain 50% of them back next year. Again, assuming that we are back to a relative state of normalcy. As well as an additional 25% the following year. We obviously are not going to know the totality of the long-term impact of this pandemic for a few more years. Until we can start to see some trend data that will ultimately help us project into the future. Obviously, this is continuing to be a moving target as we move forward. And as we look and see what is going to be the length of the impact of this pandemic. And we may need to adjust our financial forecast accordingly as we move forward. So now if I can bring you back to page nine and to this model again. We'll look real quick at the blue boxes on the outside. And these blue boxes represent the school board's role throughout this LRFP process. And currently, we're in the bottom right box where the board identifies the annual budget target. Also on the top right-hand side of the sheet in the long-range, are the long-range financial planning guiding principles. This is the principles that guide our work throughout this process. So now that we have a grounding of the process, again, as a reminder. I am going to turn it over to Kelly Benusa and she's going to dive deeper into the process as well as start to get into some of the actual finances. That have helped to guide the process and to bring us to those elements of that guiding change document that Superintendent McIntyre went through. So Kelly, I'll turn it over to you.
So the document that's up now is on page 10, and that's the PEAR narrative. It stands for Program Efficiency, Abandonment and Redirection Narrative. And the PEAR asks six key questions. What resources are being requested? A summary of the description of the proposals. It identifies and responds to the influence of race and culture in the development of the request. And that's a connection to the guiding principle that Ron just referred to under mission and strategic plan connection. It asks the question, what data will be used to measure results? And how does the request support equitable student achievement? And again, that's right from the guiding principles regarding the process connection. And the fifth question is, what's the proposal impact and the rationale? And then six, what are the legal requirements? So those are questions that need to be completed for each operating request that is made. The PEAR narrative is used for completing the long-range financial planning analysis at the January 22 LRFP advisory team meeting. And it's a continuous improvement process that's built into the long-range financial planning. And it utilizes surveys and the April Budget Manager debrief to review feedback for any potential changes to the process. So now if we go to the next document, Ron. So this next document is the Fiscal Year 2017 through 2022 School Board Approved Budget Adjustments Impacting Programs and Services. And this document shows revenue and expenditure adjustments for the past four years, the current year and projects next year. With one exception, in fiscal year 2020, there are changes in enrollment which were embedded within the LRFP process. So before that, that enrollment change was handled outside of the process and then we brought it in in 2020. So when possible, we keep reductions as far from direct instruction as possible. And as you look at this document, you can see the dollar amounts that we have done. So if we just focus on the expenditures, for instance, in fiscal year 2017, we increased our budget capacity by 1.5 million. And then added $450,000 outside of that long-range financial planning process for targeted class size. In 2018, we redeployed $500,000 of budget capacity. And then added $450,000 outside of that long-range financial planning process for teaching and support staff. In 2019, we redeployed about $521,000. And then in fiscal year 2020, we redeployed 1.4 million. And added $381,222 for class size outliers due to enrollment increases. And we also added $195,000 for co-located services for one year only, which was outside of the long-range financial planning process. In fiscal year 2021, which is the current year we are in. We eliminated the $195,000 for co-located services for one year only. And then we utilized a combination of revenue increases and redeployment of almost $1.9 million. We also added $478,000 for class size outliers due to enrollment increase. And as Ron referred to this before, those items weren't deployed because we did not see that increase in enrollment this fall. And so that will be eliminated in the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget revision due to that fall 2020 enrollment decrease. And then we added $343,000 for strategic investments. So now if we go to the next document. So this next document is the Historical Budget Trend. And again, we manage our fund balance to stay above that 5% minimum, which is within the board policy. That's the red line on this document. It shows 10 years' worth of data. For fiscal years 2021, it's the current budget and then nine years' worth of prior year actual data. For fiscal year 2021, the adopted budget has a planned fund balance spend down of almost $3.9 million. And so you can see on this document that last bar, set of bars for 2021, the green bar is less than the blue bar. And then actual results show that revenue has outpaced our expenditures in the past seven years, the seven of our past nine years. So now we can go to the next document. The next document is actually a combination of pages on pages 14 through 25. And this is our organizational complement. It provides details for the General Operating Transportation Fund, the Food and Nutrition Services Fund, the Community Service Fund, and also the Capital Fund. It utilizes the long-range financial planning process for budgeting. And then we document those changes from the prior year on this document. And this document is also part of our budget document that's posted out on our district website under Finance. And it shows what we are buying in fiscal year 2021. So this is a good summary of what it is that we're buying for the current year. So with that, we'll go to page 26. So page 26 is the Benchmark Districts. And just a reminder, the benchmark districts, we have eight financial benchmark districts and we worked with our fiscal team. And also Forecast Five, which is a data analytics company to determine which districts would be our financial benchmark districts. And so again, just to walk through this document and what it's showing. Is it showing our 2020 student demographics? So we look at our students as to number of students served. Our percent of students of color, our percent of students who receive special education services. Our percent of students who receive English learner services. And then our percent of students who are eligible for free or reduced meals. It's updated now for our November 2020 elections for both operating referendums and capital levies. And then it looks at our revenue assumptions for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. And also our expenditure trends for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. And then it looks at our anticipated reductions for those same years. And then it projects out what our unassigned fund balance is for 21. And then what is that fund balance policy for each of those districts? So only four districts were able to share any financial information this early in the process for this evening. And three of four districts that did report out to us are looking at operating reductions over the next two years. And we would fall in that category. So that's our benchmark district comparison. And with that, we'll go to the next document. So the next document is our Estimated Major Cost Drivers. And again, to orient everyone back to this here spreadsheet. At the top of this document is our 2021 adopted budget. And again, we break out our budget into big broad categories, salaries, benefits, purchase services and supplies, other. So our adopted budget for 21 is $262.7 million. And then we project out what our 2022 changes or increases would be. And for this year, it's 3%. And so then what we do on this document is we fill in items as they become known. So again, we break them out into those categories. So now we've added to this document any settled contracts to date. Any increases to benefits that we know of to date. And then also in purchase services, we've added those items and then also in the supply category. So for the starting point for some of these expenditures, we use our prior year trend. And for fiscal year 2021, we fill in that document again as information becomes available. And at this point, so this evening, we are at 2.2% spent, anticipated of the 3%. So 2.2% of that 3% has now been identified, which is slightly higher than in previous years. Even when taking into consideration that we reduced the planning assumption from 3.25% to 3% with the June approval of the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. So again, we looked at our expenditure growth trend and we reduced our overall trend from 3.75% to 3.5%. And then one of our tactics is to reduce that further. And we reduced it from 3.25% to 3% back in June. So those are the new trend percents that we are using in this budget cycle. So with that, we'll go to the next document. And the next document is the Fiscal Year 2022 Budget Planning Timeline for Operating Fund Budgets. This document has key dates in the budget process. And the items in blue are where the board takes action. So just to highlight a few of those dates on this document this evening. So if we go down, about a third way down on this page to November 10. This is the school board work session where we're looking for the board to provide additional direction for this process. And then on Friday, which is November 13th, we'll be meeting with our budget managers to affirm or change that direction based on this work session this evening. And then on November 17th, at the school board meeting, we'll have the acceptance of the fiscal year 2020 audit results. And then in December, on December 15th, at the school board meeting, that's when the levy will be confirmed. And so then we'll know what our revenue is for fiscal year 2022. And then in January, on January 22nd, that's when our LRFP advisory team will meet and review all proposals for fiscal year 2022. And then our normal cycle is that in February, we'll have a work session and a board meeting to approve any of those adjustments through this LRFP process. And then in June, again, we'll have a work session and a board meeting to approve the fiscal year 2022 operating, non-operating fund budgets. So this next document is the Fiscal Year 2021 Adopted Expenditure Budgets for All Budgeted Funds. And the long-range financial planning process has now been, it's now been 10 years since that process was designed. We utilize this for all of the budgeted funds on this pie chart, with the exception of debt service, which is the orange piece of the pie. And this here document shows that our budget that was adopted for all of these funds was $331.8 million at the beginning of this year 2021. And so now we're going to go through the base and tactics for all of the funds that utilize this process. And so the first one here is the base and recommended tactics for the General Operating Transportation Fund. And again, from a historic perspective, the strategic priority was why this here LRFP process was designed. And we had two goals or outcomes that we wanted to achieve with that design. The first was to build that framework. That's one of the first documents that Ron showed with the different colored ovals. And that's what guides our work through this process. And then the second one was to design a long-range financial forecast model, which is what's on the screen this evening. So the format is going to be the same for the other funds. So I'm going to go through the format now and then Brian and Jeff won't have to do that when they present their funds. So again, we show nine years' worth of data. We show four years of actual data, the current year we're in, and then four years out projected. So in this document, the colored portion is blue and it shows if we do nothing. So that's our base assumptions. And then the gray portion on these documents is our tactics. And that's when we utilize revenues and expenditures to impact that long-term budget forecast. So that's the setup of this document. And then we update this document key points in the process. So the adoption of the budgets in June, when we have our year-end results and our levy, which is in October or November. And then when we have our updated five-year enrollment projections and our mid-year budget adjustments, which occurs in February. And then what's different for this year is we've also revised for the November 1 enrollment due to that enrollment loss that we saw this fall. So again, just to walk through this document quickly, you might want to look at the one on your own screen because these numbers are a little tiny. But again, if we focus in the middle of the page, the middle column, that's labeled the adopted 2020 budget. That's the budget, or that's the year that we just wrapped up the audit for. And so if you look all the way down to that bottom number on that column, you can see that our results were $9.3 million better. Than they were the year before, than they were when we went into the year. So when we look at the fund balance, we're actually growing it by $9.3 million. And then if we move over one column to the adopted 2021 column. And we look down that and we go to the last gray line in the tactics related to expenditures. We have a row that says it's the Operating Referendum Timeline. And again, we have a 10-year timeline on that. And in 2021, again, it's the current year we're in. This is the seventh year of a 10-year operating referendum. So we like to make sure that we keep that in front of us. So that we know how many years remain on that operating referendum. And then if we go to the bottom left-hand corner, there's an arrow pointing to 5%. Again, that's our minimum fund balance. So this document has to always be above that 5% in any scenario. And then if we go to the right-hand corner, these are our projected revenue assumptions and expenditure assumptions for fiscal years 2022 and 2025. And that's 0% for revenues and then 3.5% for expenditures. And again, that number was adjusted with the June adoption. So then if we go back up to the blue section. The last dark blue row in that section is the operational reductions needed to maintain that minimum fund balance of 5%. And if we look at 2023 through 2025, we have combined reductions that would be needed to maintain that 5% fund balance of $29 million. So then we utilize revenue and expenditure tactics to lessen those operational reductions in the future. So if we focus on the tactics related to revenue. that first row is our revenue assumption for the basic formula increase. And for the first year of the next biennium, which is 2022, we are assuming a 0% increase in revenue. And then for 2024, our tactic would say that we should use a 1%. So those are similar to what we used in the past, with the exception of the 0% in projected 2022. Then the next row down is the estimated loss of students for fiscal year 2021. And that's based on the November 1 enrollment. And that's the $6.7 million in the 2021 column. So we're projecting a lost revenue in this current year of $6.7 million to that decrease in students that we saw this fall. Then the next row are levy adjustments based on the September preliminary levy. And those are for 2022, so those are for next year. And those net to a negative $1 million. So then if we move down to tactics related to expenditures, the first row is the enrollment alignment adjustment. And as Ron had mentioned, in 2021, we have the negative $478,000. Because of those FTE weren't deployed, we would see those expenditures being reduced then at our mid-year for 2021 in February. And then the next item down is the fiscal year 2021 enrollment loss based on November 1 enrollment. And if we look at the 2022 column, that's 3.9 million. So what we had done in previous years was we had taken the revenue adjustment in the current year. And we had taken the expenditure adjustment in the subsequent year. And so what we did with this here basin tactic was we aligned the revenue and expenditure adjustments to be in the current year. And so that's why you see two numbers for enrollment adjustment in the 2022 column. Because we're anticipating, as Ron had said, 50% of those students that we lost this year to come back to us in 2022. And so again, that $1.5 million added to the expenditure budget would be for increase in enrollment. So if that enrollment doesn't happen or something different happens, that would be impacted by how many of those FTE are deployed next fall. Then the next row down is reducing our trend to 3%. And again, we adjusted that trend back in June. And that would save us an additional $1.3 million. So then if we look to the bottom of 2022, and there's another arrow on that page, and it's pointing to 22.62%, so we would anticipate then, if all of those assumptions hold true for 2022, that we would have about $60.5 million in fund balance. We'd be spending it down at about $14.9 million next year. And so with utilizing all those revenue and expenditure tactics, that $29 million that we saw in the base model up above needed for operational reductions can be reduced by $9 million. And so we would still be looking at about $20 million in operational reductions beginning in fiscal year 2023 through 2025.
So Cheryl Stoffey, before we move on to the next basin tactics, I want to just pause here to see if there's any questions specifically to the basin tactics. There'll be an opportunity at the end of the presentation to talk more about the overarching LRP process and any questions or feedback that the board could give us. But specifically to our general fund basin tactics, are there any questions or clarification pieces for board members?
Okay, thanks, Ron. Let's go through and let's start with Director Douglas. Any questions regarding these numbers?
Yes, yeah, regarding these numbers. I don't have any questions specific to these numbers at this time.
All right, thank you. Director Simons.
Yes, so on the $6.7 million of revenue decline due to lost students, have there been any headcount adjustments, assumptions made at this point in time, considering class sizes? And I'm not making a suggestion that we should or shouldn't. I'm simply saying if we've lost those students and we've reflected that in the revenue, what is in the expense number?
Yeah, so Director Simons, the $6.7 million is the revenue decrease in the loss of enrollment. As far as from an expenditure perspective, as it relates to staffing with that enrollment, the only component that we have in this basin tactics is the $478,000 that we did not deploy. You will see the right sizing, if you will, as it relates to staffing and enrollment in the next fiscal year in FY '22. That's that $3.9 million decrease. So that's where we essentially right-size to enrollment in our staffing model.
Yep, okay, thanks. That's good clarification.
All right, thank you. Director Dusselmo.
Sorry. Okay, looking at the base, so how does, I'm just curious. And when it comes to the federal, the CARES dollars, how does that, how is that incorporated into just kind of the base? Or is it just not? And then, you know, if we also, how is that, how do we look at that, looking at, well, really would impact the future, not knowing what's going to really happen? But where does that fit in?
So the CARES fall under grants. And so those are outside of this process. And so all of the grants are brought to the board on a monthly basis. And so you'll see those in October and in November coming in. And so those are for expenditures that are outside of these needs.
So none of those dollars necessarily can replace or, like, you know, in terms of just how we've used them, impact the, kind of the base budget? They don't augment them at all?
Correct. Those CARES dollars have some specific criteria, just like any of our other grants, where we receive revenue and they're for specific purposes. So it's typically the revenue that comes in, we have the same amount of expenditures for that for those specific purpose. For the CARES dollars, each one of them, depending on whether it was a CRF or the GEAR, we talked about that previously as well. They have some specific criteria that we need to meet for those. And so those have been allocated, they came through the grant process with the board. And so they're not reflected in this basin tactics because, again, it's revenue that has an expenditure line item for that same amount.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, Director Bristol.
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mesquita Jones.
My question is, how are we getting the numbers for, okay, for assuming that we'll get back 50% of our students and then an additional 25%? Do we have indication that some are coming back at all already? Or how does that all fit in with our numbers?
That's a great question. It's, again, trying to maintain our conservative approach. We have had some anecdotal feedback through our enrollment center, as well as parents in the community in particular, with our kindergarten students. We were down significantly at the kindergarten level. We did get some anecdotal feedback that parents were still definitely planning to send their kids. We got this from principals as well that heard from parents. We're planning to send them to Osseo area schools, whether it be in kindergarten or first grade. They were just kind of sitting it out this year because of COVID. So that's why we do, we do have some confidence that we're going to get some of those students back. But we didn't have the confidence level that we could expect all of them just to go right back to our normal projection. So that's why you see the 50% and the 25%. And as we move forward and as things start to become a little bit more clear in terms of what is the length of the virus going to be? And do we have other data points in terms of understanding how many can we expect back? We may need to alter this to reflect not just next year's 50%, but then also the previous, or the following year of 25%. So we will update that and bring that in those future basin tactics.
So you feel like that's conservative enough for right now, based on what you've been hearing?
I believe, I believe it's conservative for a couple of reasons. First of all, I do believe, based on what we're hearing, that we will get some of those students back. And also, at this point, we are not anticipating, or we don't have anything reflected in here for some of the future growth. I have continued to have conversations with the city of Maple Grove in particular, for some of the development that's going to happen in the northwest Maple Grove area. They still have, even through this COVID pandemic, they still have developers that are very interested and are active in those plots and properties up in that northwest area. So it is plausible and even possible that even in next fiscal year, we may experience some enrollment growth specifically in that area. So those are things that, that still, we don't have enough kind of hard data or building permits that have been pulled to be able to reflect them in here. But I do think that that will add into, again, that conservative approach with that 50%. And I do think that we can hit that. And again, if we, if we get different data points that would tell us differently, we will update that and bring that as part of the financial projection to the board at our mid-year budget or when we come for adoption in June.
Absolutely. I'm just, I just don't want to, next year, find out we only retained 25% of, you know, got back 25% of our kids. So thank you for that.
And Jackie, if I can jump in on that, just it might be a good spot to, I think we've talked about once before, but a good reminder, the AMSD did its survey of the member districts, roughly 45 districts. And the enrollment loss range was about 2% to 4% was the kind of the range across the metro. And we were right in the middle, right at 3% or just a hair over 3%. So it was kind of interesting how it was a pretty tight range on what was experienced around the metro area.
Okay, thank you. Seeing nobody else with their mic unmuted. Ron, if you wanted to move on to the next piece of this presentation, thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl Stoffey. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Ansorge, who's our Director of Nutrition Services. And he's going to walk us through the basin tactics for Food Nutrition Service. Keep in mind, this is the same format that Kelly just walked through in terms of the major components of the basin tactics. So he's not going to go into detail, but he will highlight the financial elements to the, to the document. Jeff?
Yep, thank you, Ron. Hello, everyone. I just wanted to do a quick recap. For those that are listening, there may be new, Nutrition Services operates as Fund II, and we're a self-supporting fund. We generate our revenue through reimbursements from food sales. We serve meals out of 26 of our district sites and have approximately 150 employees. We offer services, including breakfast, lunch, snack, and supper. And then going to the basin tactics documents. On the baseline model, highlighted in the orange section, looking at the revenue on the top, you can see from 2017 to 2019, revenue has been fairly stable, hovering around the $13 million mark. And then in 2020, as a result of COVID-19, we incurred significant revenue loss in the amount of $2.5 million from what we initially projected. So that's why you see that big dip there. And then our current adopted 2021 forecast has a revenue projection at $12,648,000. And we'll make adjustments based on our current trends at mid-year this year. And looking forward to our projected 2022 to 2025 revenue, it remains flat at $12,648,000 with no assumptions built in at, in this baseline model. And on the baseline model, under expenditures, still in the orange section, you can see that expenditures from 2017 to 2019 remained fairly consistent at 92% to 94% of the total revenue. And then we hit, in 2020, again, that trend broke down. And our, we were at 113% of our total revenue with our expenditures. And looking at 2022 to 2025, we have a built-in expenditure assumption of an increase of 3.5% year over year. And moving to capital expenditures underneath, just a reminder that capital expenditures are paid for by nutrition, our nutrition fund. And that funds things such as walk-in coolers, dishwashers, and ovens. And you can see a steady increase in capital expenditures from 2017 through the projected 2025. Ultimately, our equipment is aged and we need a more aggressive replacement schedule than we have in the past. And then moving down to the gray section, you see the financial model. This represents the tactics. Some tactics related to increasing revenue include an assumption of a 2% increase in federal and state reimbursement for meals served. That's historically happened, an average 2% for the past years, as far as I can remember. And it continues that trend. And other tactics we're focusing on, which are not represented here, include increasing participation through menu development and utilizing menu mix data to drive participation. And some tactics related to decreasing expenditures, reducing the projected expenditure assumption of 3.5%, which is represented in the orange section up top, and reducing that to 3%. And our primary focus to achieve this is through decreasing food costs, through managing inventory and materials. And then if you move down to the fund balance at the, at the bottom, as you can see in the bottom left corner of the sheet, we have a fund balance target of a minimum of 12% of projected expenditures. And from 2017 to 2019, you can see our trend would significantly increase the fund balance year over year. And then we come to 2020 again, where we suffered a loss of $1,674,000 as a result of factors related to COVID-19. And based on the projections with tactics in place from 2021 to 2025, we would need to make operational reductions beginning in 2025 in order to maintain the 12% fund balance threshold that we've set. So that's a brief overview of the nutrition fund from 2017 past and the projected to 2025.
And again, Cheryl Stoffey, we would pause for any questions that board members may have as it relates specifically to our Food Nutrition Service basin tactic.
Okay, well, let me kick this off for Jeffrey. Right now, at what, right now, we are providing meals to pretty much everybody. Is that correct? Or tell me who's getting meals and who's paying for them at this point? And when does that change?
So meals, meals are available free for all students. And that has been extended through the end of the school year.
Okay, so the revenue that we're generating is pretty much all coming from the federal government. Is that it?
Correct. Federal and state, primarily federal. Whereas before, we would have had paid students paying and then having some reimbursement as well.
Okay, so the, you trying to capture additional market share of the lunch or the morning crowd, that really occurs in 2022 and beyond. There's nothing that we're doing at the end of this year to do that, since it's all paid for?
Correct. This year, this year, yeah, this year it's all paid for and the tactics will be more so for next year.
The only thing that I would add to that, Cheryl Stoffey, is that Jeff and his team have put considerable effort in ensuring that whatever learning model that we're in, that we have the best approach to ensuring that students get the meals that they need, whether it be breakfast or lunch. And that's not just those students that are in our buildings, but also for those students that have, right now, for the hybrid, the AP day, when they're home, they have meals. For our DLA students, that they have meals, whether it's to come to a location or to get them delivered. And also weekend meals. So that's something that they're doing twofold, certainly to ensure that we can hit our mark from a revenue perspective, but also, and more importantly, making sure that those students have meals throughout the course of the week, regardless of what learning model that we're in.
And a change, I would add, I would add a change for that from the spring model, which we were in earlier, at the end of last year. Our menu cycle is a three-week cycle that we would offer in school hot. And that cycle carries through to any take-home meals, whether they're hybrid take-home meals, whether they're curbside take- whether they're curbside take-home meals or distance learning boxes that we're providing. It's the same meal across the board on that three-week cycle of the items that were identified by students as the most desired as a result of menu mix data.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Mesquita Jones?
So just to clarify, Jeffrey, we don't need to worry about free and reduced lunch forms at all?
We do need, we do need to worry about free and reduced lunch forms. We've been pushing extra hard really because our free and reduced numbers are below what they have been last year to date as we are currently. So kids will get meals for free, but those free and reduced lunch forms are tied to compensatory funding, which helps site buildings have funding for whatever they need it for, for staffing, for materials, for support. So families aren't filling out those free and reduced forms. Ultimately, they're going to get their meals, but compensatory funding in the system as a whole is going to suffer. So we've been encouraging through website, through email, through Facebook, and through actual mailers to families to fill out those free and reduced forms.
Thank you. That's what I wanted us all to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Director Dawson Walton?
I don't have anything Jackie asked covered my question or comment.
Thank you. Director Bristol?
My questions have been covered. Thanks.
Thank you. Director Douglas?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify. Cheryl Stoffey asked if this is for just this year and can you clarify if the free lunches are for this school year or for the fiscal year and how that, what we're expecting if this continues, you know, into the next school year if we're still in a distance learning setting or hybrid or whatever, how do you, how do you plan to prepare for that in our budgeting documents?
Yeah, so ultimately, free meals have been available since the pandemic in, I think, late March or early April of earlier this year. And they have continued to be free all the way up until basically the end of the school year, so June 10th or 11th, whatever that last day is. They will be free. That's what we've been told by the USDA. And as far as what will happen next year with it, I guess your guess is as good as mine. I'm not sure. It's totally dependent on which direction the pandemic goes. If there's a vaccine and we're operating normal, I would anticipate that we would be back to our normal rhythm where we have free and reduced, free meals for families that qualify and paid for families that don't. As far as budgeting goes, right now, looking at the 2022, that projection that you're looking at on the screen or in front of you is based on the assumption that we will be operating in a normal setting come fall of 2021.
Okay, thank you. I had another question, but I forgot what it was, so I'll.
I'll be here.
All right, thank you. Director Simons?
No, it's all been covered. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Ron. And what's the next one?
We'll move on then to our Community Service Fund and Brian Seaberson Hall will go through this document. Brian?
Yeah, thanks, Ron. So I'll take us through this document. And the last time we reviewed the community education budget, the board had approved a balanced community ed budget with the planned spend down in early childhood. And this was obviously before we fully knew the impact of the executive order requiring school districts to continue to provide free emergency childcare to tier-one workers and also the impact of significant reductions in participation in programming in community ed due to COVID-19. As you know, 60% of our budget is typically brought in through participation fees, so highly impactful. I did want to mention that although tonight's meeting is all about numbers, we have had some silver linings in some of our participation and our programming. I would highlight the opening of the Enrollment Center to people face-to-face in July, providing summer enrichment, providing a combination of face-to-face and virtual programming, and ECFP, Youth Enrichment and Adult Basic Ed this fall, which has been a real fun silver lining to see AVE continue to serve people virtually. And also, of course, continuous childcare since mid-March. But what I'm going to do now is walk you through some of the changes we have made since the last time we looked at this document to stay as budget-neutral in community ed. Starting with the actual 2020 column, you will see that we ended the year with a reduction in our projected revenue of over $2 million and a reduction of our fund balance of $868,000. As you are also aware, we started doing cost-saving measures this summer with unfortunately, the elimination of programming as well as 200 some casual staff. And then on July 1st, we took further action and reduced a total of 40 year-round employee positions in community education. These were extremely difficult to do as these were our quality staff people. It's also difficult to make such staff reductions when a number of these people were providing emergency care to essential workers all spring and summer. When you look at our adopted 2021 column, you will see that we are estimating an additional $6.8 million less in revenue than was brought in last year. And we have already taken some actions to create an additional $6.3 million in expenditure reductions, some of which I've already talked about with staff and others that over the course of the last three weeks, our team has gone through our expense report, line item by line item, to figure out how much money we think we can save in each of those line items this school year. An easy example would be, we anticipate that we have zero expenditures on field trips in childcare because we aren't taking any, right? So that would be a good example of that one. The largest area impacted in community ed is childcare. And the hybrid elementary model is the most expensive model for our program. And the numbers that I'm presenting tonight were based on being in this hybrid model. Our plan all along was to see if these estimations are accurate at mid-year. But with the potential of going distance learning for all, we will probably need to do a two-week or one-month study when we're in distance learning for all on what our revenue and expenditures will be. But we'll just, we'll have to make that adjustment as well. Someone mentioned CARES funding earlier. The good news is the school district has allocated half a million dollars in our CARES funding to help cover the costs of required free childcare. However, the current model that we are in, we are expected to have that result in approximately $1.5 million in expenditures to serve tier-one employees for free childcare. Which is why on the bottom of our budget, you can see that we currently have expenditures outpacing revenue by $1.1 million. The next couple of years' projections show slight growth in our programs, but I believe this is very hard to predict at this time. You can see toward the bottom of the projected 2022 column, we predict an additional operational adjustment of $400,000 based on our projection of only 15% growth of programs when we go back to, as Ron called it, a sense of normalcy. That's really hard to predict. You know, we know that when we, if you remember just a month ago, we were preparing to go elementary schools in person five days a week and we opened up childcare at that time. And instead of the typical 1,200 to 1,300 contracts, we only had 600 contracts sent in. So that might not be predictive of a year from now, but that's why we're being very conservative on what we think our growth will be in the future. I do want to just take a minute to thank my coordinator team, Assistant Director Carrie Cave and Mike Hewler for all their work that they've done these last few weeks in order for us to pull a detailed actual revenue and expenditures since the start of the school year in order for me to be able to present as accurate of a Basin Tactics report as I can to you. And I also want to thank all the community education staff who've continued to make opportunities happen for youth and community members during a very challenging time in the field of community ed. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. With that, we'll move into some questions. Director Bristol, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time. I just, I feel for you having to make those cuts. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Director Douglas?
Thank you. Brian, I just wanted to say I really appreciate your really conservative approach here since we really don't have any idea what's going to happen in the future with community ed. I mean, I have quite a bit of confidence that once things return to some sort of sense of normalcy, we'll see a pretty good increase in those programs because we know that they're high-quality and highly sought-after programs. And up until COVID hit, you know, we were talking about expanding and how do we better serve and offer more opportunities? So I imagine that it was incredibly difficult to have those conversations and reducing staff and letting people go. I just have one question about that specifically, which is any of those staff members that had to be let go, if we have tried to, I don't want to say repurpose, that's not the word I'm looking for, but reassign to some of the open positions that we have, if they have the correct licensure or interest?
We have. A number of the clerical AESPs were able to move into some positions that opened up in the school district. Now, a couple of them also bumped other people out based on seniority, right? So other staff in our buildings unfortunately lost their jobs due to bumping rights. So that's kind of a two-tiered answer, Heather, but I appreciate it. So yeah, we did work closely with the union through this whole process so that we could be prepared when we met with our staff to let them know that their job was being eliminated, what opportunities were available to them or not available to them based on their particular scenario. So yeah, thank you for that question.
You happen to know how many staff we were able to reassign?
I have to go back and double-check, but I'm already, you know, I'm already visualizing about six people in my brain who I know were able to get a job, get a different position. There were a number of people who were not.
Okay.
Primarily, especially on the management level, we had more success getting AESP positions, different jobs than versus my salary and management people who I released, not as successful.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Director Mesquita Jones?
This one hits really hard because I, I am a community ed teacher by trade, so it hurts to see this happening with COVID, just like everything else. First of all, I want to say thank you to Kelly and Jeffrey and Brian and Ron for the hard work on working on these budgets when we are dealing with cuts and low enrollment, et cetera. And then I want to say to Brian that I appreciate all the creative ways of trying to do programming in new and innovative ways. I don't really have any questions about the numbers.
Okay, thank you very much. Director Simons?
No questions. Again, I'd echo, thank you, Brian and team for the thoughtful detail and actions. This being a fund that's primarily fee-based, I appreciate the work that you've done to really right-size it as best we can to predict what may be happening with COVID-19 impacts. So I just really appreciate that you've worked so hard to make sure that we're very responsible in this space while also trying to ensure that we continue to offer programming and activities in creative ways. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Dawson Walton?
Yeah, Brian, I just, you know, you and your team have been really, there's been a lot of ups and downs for you, especially during this time of COVID from last spring, our conversations to now. And, you know, a lot of your, the team, they're providing the childcare to support our frontline workers and that's huge. And so I just want to thank all, everyone for that. And as we navigate through this space, it's really uncertain. But I do agree, I mean, I think that there's been, there've been a lot of creative solutions. And so I don't have any questions, but just want to thank you and your team and leadership and keeping us kind of on track and being able to mitigate through this time.
Thank you. I have a question regarding the 1.5 million in costs associated with providing the care for tier-one parents' children versus the half a million in CARES funding that we're allocating to that. Is that half a million, was that allocated by the state saying that out of this CARES money, this much must go? Or is that our decision to take part of the money we're getting and putting in that half million there and maybe other monies elsewhere? So where is the deficit coming from? Is that driven by the state or is that being driven by us?
No, we were the ones who chose to utilize that much, that amount for childcare out of that money that was allocated to us from the CARES Act.
Okay, and where else did some of that money go?
Ron would have to answer that question, I think.
Board members, yeah, I provided you a chart with that probably about two weeks ago, the breakdown of that CARES funding, number of categories that we disseminated that I can resend it if it's helpful.
No, I just want to know, I mean, yes, we could have used all the money to cover that, but we did not. So we made a conscious decision to spend down this fund by a million one rather than, or take a loss in that program rather than covering it and taking a loss elsewhere. And that was a choice. That's, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, and Cheryl Stoffey, I think, and Brian can correct me if I'm wrong. When we first started looking at allocation of our CARES funding, we were doing our best to try to estimate what it was going to look like for the cost for that emergency childcare. And I believe that even started before the executive order came in terms of what was expected of us in school districts. And keep in mind, expectations through the executive order that was not funded by the state. So when we initially made that allocation of $500,000, it was an anticipation of providing some scholarships for students and some other elements even before that mandate came for that we are required to offer emergency childcare. So, you know, certainly we can continue to look at that and as additional funds become available, we can look at offsetting. And we have had some conversations on that with Brian as well in terms of how do we use all of our resources to limit the impact of COVID on our system.
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no other open mics for any questions, we can wrap this one up, but I think capital is remaining. Is that right, Ron?
That is correct. I'm going to turn it over, back over to Kelly Benusa to walk us through the capital budget.
So this is our last document this evening for the budget process. So this is the Basin Recommended Tactics for the Capital Fund. And this fund uses a zero-based budget approach, meaning that we start with $0 allocated and every request has to be made and then we build the budget up from there. And so just to walk quickly through this document, again, this document has also been updated for the actual 2020 results. And if you look down that column for actual 2020, which is kind of in the middle of that page, you can see that we actually improved our fund balance position by about $1.9 million in 2020. And then if we move over one column to 2021. And then if we move over one column to 2021, this is the current year that we are in. And again, if we go down to the last item in the gray, the tactics related to revenue, we are in also the seventh year of the capital technology levy. And that's a 10-year levy, and it will expire in 2024. What's different about this fund, again, if we look at that bottom arrow in the left-hand corner, is the fund balance has a minimum floor of 10% of expenditures. And then if we move over to the right-hand corner, there's an arrow and it's pointing to our revenue and expenditure assumptions. We assume with these assumptions that revenue will stay flat at zero and the projected expenditures will also be at zero because we're buying one-time materials in a lot of these cases. Then if we stay down in that gray section, we have tactics related to revenue. And the first three rows all have to do with levy adjustments, mostly in the area of lease levy adjustments, and then also our capital tech levy. So an increase in that area, which the board has seen those numbers back in September with the preliminary levy. Then the next row down is the estimated loss of students, which also impacts our capital allocation based on November 1st. So reduction of $169,000. And then if we move down into the expenditure tactics, we have the salary and benefit increase also at 3%, which aligns with our general fund parameters. And then we have the enrollment alignment adjustment and the fiscal year 2021 enrollment loss as of November 1st, just like we had in the general fund. So that aligns there. And then in this case, because we had that positive fund balance and our fund balance is quite healthy in the capital fund, we are recommending that we have an operational increase of $900,000 to bring that fund balance down to about 30% at the end of fiscal year 2022. And so with that, that concludes the basin tactic. And so I'll turn it back over to Ron.
So before I make a few final remarks and ask for some specific guidance from the board on a couple of things, is there any questions specific to our capital budget?
If you do have a question, open up your mic and I'll call on that instead of going through everybody. So far, no questions. What we did have was, oh, I have a question on that $900,000 increase in spending this year. What is that going to be on that is needed that has not been used in prior years?
So our process is to, again, have a zero-based budget approach. And so budget managers are putting through their requests. In their requests, we also have a process for anticipating what they'll need for the next five years. And so we don't know what those requests are at this time, but we'll be seeing those throughout the process here as we meet with budget managers.
And that'll be a one-time $900,000 increase, or are you expecting that to continue?
The way the document.
Get that baked in?
Yes. The way, the way the document works is it rolls back into 2023. And you can see that we don't anticipate any reductions in this fund through 2025. In fact, we have an additional spend down in 2025.
So you said it does get baked into 2023, so it's not really zero-based?
It gets, what's zero-based is all the requests have to come through. So if you want a dollar of capital, you have to ask for a dollar of capital. What we balance to are the expenditures that we project from year to year. And so we have a target dollar amount that we can afford, if you will, to allocate for fiscal year 2022.
This $900,000 increase over the next four years is really a $3.6 million increase because we're, we've reset the level. It's a statement of fact. So that's all the questions that I had. Oh, I did have one more. So the long-term facilities maintenance budget, which is around 25 million or so, is not in any of these we discussed tonight. And that's added on top of the 331 million that you showed as the budget. So the budget is really around 356, 360 million. Is that correct? What other items are we missing from there? Or is that, is that it?
All of our grants. So in a typical year, we have about $30 to $40 million in grants.
Okay. So that's where, when we're looking at it, we're really spending around $390 million a year?
Yes.
Okay. Somewhere, I think somewhere would be nice if we showed that, that number. And I did see it. It showed 370 to 390, but it wasn't really a public number. It would be nice to show all of that, the total budget, the total revenue, and the total expenditures that we have going on. So for the future.
Sure. So on a monthly basis, we bring monthly financial statements to the board.
Yep.
As those grants are approved and we have authority to spend those, that's when we bring the revenue and expenditure budgets forward to the board. And what's different about grants is they bounce to zero. So the revenue has to equal the expenditures. And so if you were to review the monthly reports that are coming in November, you would see then where we're at for the current year in total.
Right. No, I understand. But I just think that first big pie chart that we showed at the very beginning is somewhat misleading when it says 331 and it's really 390.
And the other thing I would say too, Chair Stoffey, is that, and actually it will be at our next board meeting when we go through the process of our audit and our financial statements. And then you'll see collectively in all of our funds, all of the revenues and expenditures there as well. So we'll be sure to point that out.
All right. Thank you.
So, so I'll just wrap up with a few more thoughts if I can and then turn it back over to you, Chair Stoffey, to hopefully give us some guidance and some, and some feedback. So obviously now we just take a look at all of our basin tactics on these different funds. And we'd like some direction from the board, specifically as it relates to our budget targets. And Superintendent McIntyre, as well as myself, introduced this early on in the presentation. So I'll draw your attention back to that original guiding change document that Superintendent McIntyre presented. Again, it's on page seven and eight of your board packet. A couple of things that we're seeking some guidance. First, as we mentioned a few different times, we've preliminarily given our budget managers direction to operate under a zero-based budget approach. That's what we have indicated in our basin tactics that you have just reviewed as well. And so our question to the board is, is this the direction that the board would like us to continue to go down as we develop those budget adjustment and requests? And then the second question is whether board members support giving our budget managers guidance to align any of those budget adjustments that they're working through with those strategic directions and the work initiatives that were summarized in that draft operational plan that Superintendent McIntyre went through that are on pages three and six of your board packet. So those are the two questions that we're really looking for some guidance. So again, as Kelly indicated on Friday, we will be meeting with our budget managers and we would bring forth that guidance for them to continue to do their work in that LRFP process.
All right. Thank you, Ron. With this, I mean, Cory, do you have any comments as we move forward into this discussion?
No, I think I just, we were looking for some direction from you as, you know, we're trying to begin this transition of setting some guidance out in front of the budget process instead of at the end. And then I think it'll again, take us a couple of years to get that going with everything we're juggling right now. But this is our first attempt to give a little guidance on the front end to the process. Once now you've seen the fiscal or financial reality that we're facing moving forward the next four years. And are you, I think I generally couch it as, are you supportive of those general initiatives that we've outlaid, knowing that they're fluid and they're flexible, not set in stone at this point? But some direction on the front end that we've not provided in the past. So hopefully that helps.
Okay. So directors, I'm going to call on each of you again to have your thoughts and opinions on those items. So let's start off with Director Dawson Walton.
So, you know, it's a lot to take in, you know, there's a lot of considerations to make. I mean, generally, yes. I guess my question is, is how do you, and apologize if you've kind of continued to restate this, but in, given that we're trying to, you know, set our priorities, the strategic priorities, knowing that they didn't, they weren't able to fully kind of firm up. And then this budget process, like are we, is there then room to wiggle a little bit if things do, if priorities switch, if things change, if we happen to, let's say, something happens with the CARES funding and we get an influx of money that we happen to be able to pay for with that versus using kind of the base budget? Like how does all, like how does all that timing work?
Yeah. Thank you, Director Dawson Walton. I would say, you know, I think because of the fluid nature that we're in right now with COVID and with some of those additional funding, but also in our, in our planning with our strategic planning process, I do think that there is flexibility. What we're looking for right now is to give our budget managers a sense and some guideposts to do their work right now, knowing that if we enter into the spring and the situation changes, whether it's because we get an influx of additional CARES dollars or the board decides that they want to add or subtract something from the strategic directions or the work initiatives, we can strategize on how to bring that before the board to display it in our basin tactics and financial forecasts and what that looks like so that the board can make decisions and give us guidance potentially to add that into the FY22 budget. Again, the budget won't actually get approved until June. We'll ask the board to approve those, those budget adjustments that we're going to be working on right now in February. So there is some time between February and June that some things can happen. And we'll certainly be flexible and bring forth those things if they become evident that, that we want to include them in the FY22 budget. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Yeah, it does. So, I mean, for me, I'm supportive of moving forward as, and as long as you're just, I really want to keep our ear to the ground around, I mean, I know we're going to have a presentation later today around DLA and some other things. And I just want to make sure we are, we talk a lot about creative solutions and this, we're facing this pandemic and moving in next, as we look at in the future of next year and how to always, you know, better prepare, you know, anticipate, you know, things that are, that are going to happen. And so just, you know, I just want to say, keep our staff encouraged to, you know, continue to bring forth, you know, ideas or creative solutions to some, maybe some stumbling blocks that are happening. So yeah, as long as that, that's why I was asking that flexibility as we look at that and amend areas. So I'm fine moving forward. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Director Bristol.
I'd just like to thank you guys for all the work you've done to give some preliminary guidance. And I know that in this whitewater environment that we're in with COVID, that you may have to make some adjustments, but you certainly have a really great plan in place. And I know that there's been some hard choices made already. And, you know, I just continue in my short time here to have been really impressed with the fiscal approach that the district takes. And I just thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Director Douglas.
Thank you. I just would like to say that as we move forward and start receiving different recommendations, that of course, you know, generally, a zero-based budget approach is preferred. However, I know that, as I have expressed several times, as well as other board members, that we're open to one-time resources or supplementary materials that are going to have a strong and immediate impact to better serve our students. And so I would encourage that. I also want to encourage that when we're being presented with these things, that we're really keeping it student-centered and forward-thinking. So I think we've expressed a number of times, we would like to see out-of-the-box thinking. But I don't want to see, personally, I don't want to see some, a grand idea that means that we have to eliminate, you know, 10 highly qualified staff members or, or something of that nature. So being really cognizant of the whole picture and how it's going to serve all of our students as we move forward. And I personally would be open to looking at ideas or suggestions, recommendations, of resources, materials, support that maybe has a longer financial impact, but has proven data-driven results that align with our priorities. I'm very, very concerned about how this year is of distance learning and hybrid learning and just the continual changes that our students are going through. I'm very concerned about the long-term impact to these students and whatever we can do to set them up for success as we go into next year. I really want to see things that, that kind of in that direction, I guess. So I feel like I could talk about it for a long time, but I won't. But I guess that's the general overall direction that I'm hoping to see is that we're really looking at innovative, creative ideas that are going to have an impact on our students. Maybe they've already been tried and tested in other areas with similar demographics or in other distance learning settings, maybe like schools that are already online all the time. And I also don't want to see any more staff reduction, if possible.
Thank you, Heather, for that feedback. I think the one thing that I wanted to just address as it relates to the zero-based budgeting, and I didn't focus on it in the presentation, but it's something that we started last year. It was something we called strategic investments. And if you recall, for those of you that were on the board last year, we brought forth some, kind of along those lines, thinking outside the box, what are things creative that would have an impact that specifically aligned with our mission and kind of our strategic objectives? Those are now baked into our process. So I would, I believe that it is likely that you will see some of those come forth through the LRFP process. I will certainly, in our budget manager meeting on Friday, I will extend your encouragement as it relates to really thinking outside the box, really finding true and tested elements that maybe have worked in other areas and bringing forth the most creative ideas, even if we don't have an offset. And then you as a board can determine whether those things, those are things that we want to fund outside of a zero-based approach that will have an impact to our fund balance. But again, being very strategic in how we are investing in those items. So that is still part of the process. And you'll see that as we go through the process. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Director Muscata Jones.
One thing I forgot to ask Brian. Brian, with the additional money that we expect to possibly spend on childcare, which might change if we're in distance learning more often, my understanding, because it's not as costly, are we looking at losing even more staff?
I don't anticipate that this year. And we, we also have commitments, Laurel could speak to it. We have commitments because the year has already started based on the hours that we promised people. So I would say that right now, where the staff that we have in place are the staff that we're going to have in place throughout the year.
Okay. So the question is, are we okay with the parameters that you set forth? And the strategic directions and the, I don't have the verbiage in front of me now because my screen went quiet. But I am okay with what we've set forth. It's, it follows what we've been saying. It, it's student-centered, what we've already said, and it's equity-based and efficient. So I'm fully on board with what's going forward.
All right. Thank you. Director Muscata Jones. Director Simmons.
So I just want to, I have several questions. I want to start with recent, just in the last conversation, Ron, you were telling. you were telling us about the strategic investment being baked into the process. So the strategic investments that we made the last time are now, have become part of the budget. Therefore, if we provide for more strategic investment, we're really increasing the overall budget versus maybe putting something in to learn, taking it back out, and then putting something against some, a new, different initiative. So I just want to clarify that when we say, it is part of our process, but it's not, it's not a fund that we're allocating and reallocating. We're actually increasing the budget if we continue to follow that process, right?
That is, that is correct, Director Simons. And I'll kind of dig in a little bit further with that and saying that part of that process that we added last year was a measurement component. In that, for any of those that the board decided to fund last year as a strategic investment, while it was added into our budget, we were also going to be tracking and measuring those for its intended outcome. And from there, then, making sure that if it's not meeting its intended outcome, either pivoting with that and doing continuous improvement or saying, okay, we're not going to fund this anymore and bringing that through the process as well. So that would be the same process that, you know, we're kind of at the intersect right now where we're looking at new strategic investment potential for the board to consider. And also in the process of being halfway through the first year of those original strategic investments, going through that measurement piece, and then at the end of this year, taking a look at that data to understand whether or not it met its intended outcome. And then from there, what do we do with that strategic investment in terms of continuing it, eliminating it, or changing it to be more effective?
Great, thank you. I just wanted to make sure we didn't lose sight of that last piece. So that's good, that's good information, helpful. Overall, in setting the strategic plan and the priorities and having those principles way at the beginning of this presentation, I think that's a framework that we've, we definitely been asking for over the past two years. So Superintendent McIntyre really appreciates seeing that come to life. My question is, did that inform the department-level budget? So I see in the, in the pair and in the detail, we're saying that we want the zero-based budget to be aligned to that. But did we actually reallocate by department? Because that is my concern right now, is that we're kind of, and correct me if I'm wrong, we are trying to maintain flat or zero-based to that department budget within it. But we're not saying, how do we know that we, I want to ensure that we're making the right choices across departments and that that is aligned with the strategic priorities at the, at the beginning. So maybe I just missed that step of the conversation.
And I know Ron can add to this, and I probably missed pointing that out. So great, great catch. Yes, the actual work that went into elevating some of the priorities really started with our learning leaders at the, even at the building level, all the way up through our cabinet and those responsible for those department budgets. And so that is also part of our process moving forward. And we involved from late summer all the way up to this point, a number of stakeholder input to that process. And then Ron, I think you can speak to more the technical side of how that happens with our department.
Yeah, so I think, I think it's a little bit of a challenging transition that we're going through, and it's a good transition. But ultimately, and we've had some conversations already at budget manager meetings, I think this framework with this guiding change document that really points us to the work initiatives for next year, but also through that operational plan points out those strategic directions is going to help with this process, but really challenging our budget managers to be looking at each of their budget line items and, and understanding how do they align with those strategic directions? How do they align with the work initiatives? Are there things that are not meeting their intended outcomes? And if they need to eliminate something, not, not do it just because they want something else over here, but because it doesn't align with that strategic direction that we're going to? And being willing, maybe then, to have that offset be to fund something else that really is aligned with that. So it's, I think it's a little bit of a change in, in practice for our budget managers that we're going to continue to lean in and encourage them with. We do have that strategic investment process because we want our budget managers to be thinking creatively, as Heather talked about earlier, and to be bringing the best ideas forward that is going to support that strategic initiative. But we also have to then be making sure that we're constantly evaluating each of those kind of current programs and that standard work that we've been doing to understand, is that still the work that we should be in, the resources we should be allocating to those areas? So that we don't have to always be making the strategic investments that's outside of kind of the zero-based approach, but that we're really prioritizing all of our budget line items. So I will say that I think it's going to be a work in progress. We're not going to get it overnight, but it is the conversations that we're having. And we'll continue to encourage our budget managers to be thinking in that way so that we are all kind of working towards the same goal, not just by, in the silos of individual departments or divisions.
And if I could quickly just echo in that strategic growth and change process, even when things at the standard worker continue to evaluate, is it working? Does it need to be improved, or does it need to leave the system? So just within the standard work level of our types of work. So just want to add that in.
Yeah, so I think what I'm hearing is that we're, we're getting this started. It's, it's a change in the way that we're thinking about how we budget from top to bottom. I do want to clarify though, so if I'm looking at pages 15 and 16, for example, so when we thought about how many dollars are going to go to learning and achievement versus educational equity versus operation and sites, did we actually use that framework to set that budget at the top before we then cascaded those, kind of that framework downward? Or is it more, as Ron described, kind of once you're in your budget, you're thinking about it differently? Does that make, do any other reas?
I'll, I'll see if I can hit this. I'm not sure if I completely understand your question. But on page 15, as you look at that, that's our current FY21 budget. That's kind of the standard, right? And so as we, as we start the budgeting process for FY22, we're really looking at those adjustments. So what are those, typically it's been, what are those new initiatives that we want to, that we need the resources for? And then we, I think, a lot of times, the, the natural impulse is to say, okay, I want to, I think this initiative is really important, and it will help to further our, our mission and our vision. But now I have to find the offset. And I, I think, you know, where we want to get to is that first, we're looking at all of our current way that we're spending our resources, understanding and measuring whether or not those are still effective, then going to the perspective on what are those things that we need to do for those work initiatives? And, and how does that align with each other in terms of those things that we need to get rid of or stop doing versus the things that we want to start and trying to break down those silos? So I don't, I don't know if that necessarily answers your question in relation to page 15, but.
No, that's okay. I'm just trying to understand the tops-down cascade of how the framework's applied, at what different levels. So that's something I can take off more directly offline. And I'll move quickly through my last two questions and comments. So the, shoot, I just lost one of them. Okay, so in terms of, am I aligned with CBB and budget adjustments to strategic directions? Generally, yes, but I want it to be clear that when we think about this, because of the lost revenue, we're really looking at this year's kind of tracking and next year's, which is a combined $25 million reduction to our fund balance. So, so we're making a choice to make a significant reduction in that fund balance, which thankfully, that's why we, we're, we do really try to be diligent in being fiscally responsible so that in times like this, we have that, those resources to be able to be responsive. But that, that is a very significant shift in those two years combined. This year, where we're tracking, which shows 10 million in that, in the page, as well as next year's based on the parameters. So I just want to be very clear about that. And then I guess my last comment would be, you know, we, we've talked a lot about wanting to have, fund good ideas. So I want to continue to recommend that we actually create a system to fund that so that we can visibly see good ideas coming up and reward good ideas and fund good ideas. And I'd love to see dollars specifically set aside for that for each year to be able to say, we are funding $500,000, $200,000, whatever that number is, and teacher-generated ideas in a pipeline that we can see and that everybody understands the process for. So I'm going to just continue to emphasize that that's a high interest that I have. So I'll end there. Thank you, guys. I really appreciate the work on this.
Thank you. And Ron, could you put up the document that were the guiding principles when we talked about what we won't do or what we will do? I can't seem to find it on here, but I just want to go down through is when we talked about we were agreeing to certain things, that it's part of that framework that I believe was Corey initially presented. There you go. So I don't know if you can blow that up further because I can't read it, but. Thank you. Number three, we will not invest in strategically misaligned or, well, is it misaligned short-term needs? Or is it misaligned and/or short-term needs? You know, the whole goal is to not do things on a short-term basis that we need to have this planned out long-term. So when we talk about, you know, funding these special projects that come up and we have to save money for these things, that seems like it's short-term spending, and that seems like it's unacceptable based upon this document. So I just want to make sure we're aligned on that piece.
And Mike, my comment on this is, that's the art of this right now. We are so immersed in some of that short-term reality right now, what's been right in front of us, balancing that with effective long-range planning, right? So just trying to be aware of the fact that we, we got to make sure anything short-term has, has effect long-term. And sometimes those are a series of trade-offs. And I think, you know, even when we get to a mid-year budget adjustment, we've, we're that much deeper into the reality of things than we're making those decisions along the way. So I think you've highlighted something that's a push-pull tension. What do we need short-term that doesn't derail us long-term? As, as Director Simons pointed out so well, we will be spending our fund balance down in the next four years significantly, right? So how do we be ultra-wise about the short-term things we need?
In 2025, I think it was, we're showing, directed 2025, we're showing 5.23% in reserves, which is two and a half weeks, which is basically not a way to run a business or run anything that's $400 million. We have a, in two years, there will need to be probably an updated referendum or an updated levy because the following year, in 2023, it expires. So be very cognizant of the fact that we have about 110,000 adults in this district that are taking a look at that and wanting to make sure that we are spending money wisely and educating the kids properly over the next two years. And right now, that seems to be up in the air with all of the distance and hybrid and everything else, that we need to earn their trust and respect to get what will be about a half a billion-dollar ask if we go out for the 10 years like we did the last time. So be very cognizant of that, that it's just two years away of the election that we would probably have to have a significant ask of our taxpayers. So I'm going to leave that right there. Any other final questions on this? I, so I say, yes, go forward with the parameters, focus on the long-term, significant impacts, but also understand that there has to be results because we've got two years until there's going to be a significant referendum. All right, so I, I think the mood was, yes, we're going forward as sort of indicated here. Corey, do you want to?
Yeah, I appreciate it. And again, we'll continue to evaluate it. We will be back in front of you before the board, before you know it, in February, at a mid-year adjustment. So this at least helps us set the path. And with so much fluid nature of the things we're dealing with, you know, we'll, we'll continue to be nimble as best we can with all those kind of core principles in mind. So we really appreciate all the board members giving their guidance and feedback. I think this gets us started and we'll adjust accordingly. Well, thank you. I think, Ron, we can probably move on to our next agenda item.
And before we do so, it's 9:08. Let's come back, let's take a quick break and come back at 9:13. So if we could, yeah, just take a quick break and everyone shut down their stuff, and we'll be back in five minutes. Thank you.